I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 11th, 2024, and the time is 6:00 P. M. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. In the consent agenda, we have a number of appointments and a number of increase, decrease, and changes in assignment.
Hey, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Move by Jeff, second by Corey. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion passes. Item number three is our appointment of our school board member. At the July 8th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting, the board approved by roll call vote, the resolution declaring a school board vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence effective June 19th, 2024 for board member Noel Stratmon. Pursuant a Minnesota Statute 123 B O nine subdivision four, the board is requested to appoint a a school board member to fill the seat until Mr. Stratmon is again able to resume his duties as a school board member for the remainder or for the remainder of the unexpired term, whichever date is earliest. The board approved by roll call vote to direct me, the chair, to recommend a former board member with service as recently as 2020 to fill the vacancy created by Noel, by Noel's temporary resignation. I contacted the five former board members that had served on our board as recently as 2020. Four of the five former board members indicated they had limited capacity or interest at this time. Dr. Rob Hardy immediately indicated he was willing to fill Noel Stratmon's vacancy. Dr. Hardy served as an elected board member for eight years, being first elected in 2012. I will make a motion and then answer any questions before we vote. I need I will, oh, I'm sorry. And then I will administer the oath. I move that we appoint Dr. Rob Hardy to immediately fill the seat of Noel Stratmon until Noel is again able to resume his duties as a board member or for the remainder of the unexpired term, whichever date is earliest. Is there a second? Okay, second by Corey. Do we have any comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of appointing Rob Hardy to fill more Stratton's temporary vacancy say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion passes and we welcome you back to the table, Rob. I'll administer the oath. You want to take this seat here?
If you get a picture.
I'm gonna go ahead and do the oath for your radical stand and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state. And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member
How this
of independent school district. Number six fifty-nine. To the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you. I need to have some paperwork for you. If you want to take care of that, we will continue on with our meeting. Okay, we did not have any public comment sign up, so we will move on. To announcements and recognitions, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, we just have one announcement this evening. Thirty-nine incoming seventh grade students had a successful trip to Eagle Bluff from July fifteenth to the seventeenth. And while at Eagle Bluff, students demonstrated a willingness to challenge themselves, top-tier energy, and great teamwork. Community education thanks the following district staff and parent chaperones for assisting with the trip. District staff included Chris O'Neal, Paula Bargary, and Michael O'Keefe. Volunteer chaperones included Marcy Corinta, Bryn Brightley, Brianna Boulfer, and Travis Pash. And so, of course, Eagle Bluff is an environmental learning center, and this is an opportunity for incoming seventh graders to have that experience. So we thank community ed and all of those chaperones, and of course, the students and their families for taking advantage of the opportunity.
Anyone else comments or any, any other thing to offer for recognitions and announcements? I have something that I'm going to pass out. And this I got from the summer seminar that Matt and Amy and I attended last week. I went to the pre-conference date Sunday night, and that was all about legislative advocacy. And so this was one of the handouts that they prepared for us, customized for our district. The point of this document is that you have some quick figures that you're able to make, make a story of our school district. And so the point is that you would look at these quick facts and able to be able to share the story of our district. And so, for example, you can see one of the, well, there are several really great statistics on here, but, for example, we can say that sixty-six percent of our students graduate pursuing college. And then, of course, the flip side of that, thirty, thirty-four percent going into service or starting a job right away. And so that's part of our story. If you see the student performance, you can see that we have some great percentages, but they're not as high as we would want them to be. And so the story there would be, what does it take then to bring interventions to our district? And that goes back to funding, of course, and advocacy for public education. So I just wanted to share that document with you. And then the next day, the Monday, was the full day seminar that Amy and Matt and myself attended. And I invite Amy or Matt to speak about that.
I have a question on your handout. So the graduation rate, you know if that's the four-year rate? For the graduation rate instead of five years?
I believe it's the four-year rate. I don't know.
And for the whole district, including all
The ALC and everything, yeah. Because I, I think if we go with five years, it gets substantially closer to one hundred, so.
Still good.
Still good. I just want to say I was really happy to attend the summer seminar and encourage all my colleagues here to take advantage of MSBA. They have a lot to offer to us. And one of the things that you'll hear me say, one of my probably main takeaway is the importance of connecting our policies back to our vision and our mission. So I'm going to be making those comments as we go through policies in the future. You know, how does this connect back to our vision for the school district?
Thank you. Dr. Hillman, any comments?
I, I really appreciated the keynote speaker, Phil Gore, Phil Gore. And it was just really, he was excellent. And I've got his book, just talking about school board governance. There are so few people across the country that write about school boards, write about research about school boards. And he really just had a great message about governance and effective board leadership for academic improvement and really found him to be interesting. So I've got his book, enjoyed that, and also enjoyed hearing from the Rochester School Board members really about some of the ways that they manage their meetings. They were really actually talking about how they do a school board academy for potential school board candidates, but they shared a number of their processes, and there were a few tips that we thought, oh, that would be really good to do here. So some good takeaways that we can use here in Northfield.
Yeah, you reminded me too on that advocacy session the night before. Ties back to the tying our policies to our strategic plan is always talking about the why, why do we do what we do? And they even had a Simon Sinek book that they shared with us on the why. Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, we will move on to item six, which is our items for discussion and reports. And first off, we, first up, we have Northfield Area Learning Center Improvement Showcase and Director Daryl Kelner will provide the board with an overview of the ALC successes and highlights in twenty-three, twenty-four on the focus areas for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Welcome.
Thank you. See if this queues up. There it is, just on cue. All right. So I am Daryl Keller. I am the ALC Director for Northfield here. I'll go through this a new format, pretty excited about. So we're going to go through the new format of highlights and focus areas. So starting first, the strategic plan of the district. The vision, we prepare every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. And the strategic commitments of people, learner outcomes, equity, communication, stewardship, and partnerships, you'll see intergrained as I go through the presentation. So we chose some benchmarks, and I'll explain why we chose certain ones and how we view them through our program's eyes as we're going through. And so you'll see those specifically called out when I'm going through each highlight or focus area. All right, so school improvement showcase purpose, sharing stories, identifying the focus areas, aligning with those benchmarks that we just talked about in the strategic plan, and just giving you a a vision or direction in which our program's headed. So to start the twenty-three, twenty-four School Improvement Plan goals that we had last year, here's just a snapshot. So the first one, we had parent parent engagement was our, was our goal. We wanted to have, we, the year before, we had three percent of parents fill out the survey of parent satisfaction. So we wanted to increase that to get more input on their experience. So the goal was from three percent to twenty. It's a lofty goal. We ended with five percent. So we didn't quite get to the twenty percent that we were hoping for. But as you'll see in one of the highlights, we did have some success in that area. Attendance. Yeah, last year, the goal was to have an overall rate of eighty-five percent. We ended with a range. So for those people that remember, we have instead of two semesters like the high school, we have eight grading periods. And so they're about a month each or so. And so when I say a range, we go grading by grading period by grading period to measure what the attendance rate was for each of them. And that's why the range was seventy-six to eighty-four. So it's comparing eight grading periods in a year. And same with the credit. So the credit completion, our overall rate, the goal was seventy percent. Our range was sixty-two to seventy-six. And you'll see here shortly, there was a lot of success, success in that one. And then equity was our last goal of last year, and we wanted to implement the ethnic studies. They had the change in legislation where that was required to be a class, not for a couple of years. Our goal was to implement that soon as possible. And so we wanted to have that sometime during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we did get it for all the fourth quarter. We had that class taught by our social studies teacher. And what we did for that, there's, the standards aren't quite out yet for that. And so we used existing standards to, to focus that class. All right. So the first highlight was credit completion. So this one, the staff at the ALC are very proud of. There was quite a bit of success this last year with our credit completion. So the two charts that you see, the, the one in the top, see if I can, I don't have a mouse, but the one in the top left, what that shows you is the straight red line across. That's our goal. And so as you can see, we met the goal in seven out of the eight grading periods. So we were really pleased with that, that we had met our goal of reaching a certain percentage of credits earned. There was one dip there, but as you can see in the other slide or the other chart, the not straight red line, the one that is a little more mountainous, that is, so I've been keeping data since I started here in Northfield. And so that's two thousand fifteen. I started a couple of years before that, but two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three averages. And so it's the average of all those years. And that's what that red line is, is just showing you grading period one red line average for the past ten years or so. And then the blue column is what we actually got for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so the, the red line is our average, the blue columns are what we actually got last year. So if you notice last year, our credit completion, we were above average every grain period. So we earned more than we average than we do on average for every green period throughout the year. And it is interesting to note that little dip from the other one. If you notice, there is a, you know, almost a ten-year average of a cycle where start strong, it kind of goes into that winter break where we, that's kind of our lowest credit earning. And then we bounce back and then we finish the year a little bit stronger. And that's, so that's again, year after year, that's pretty similar pattern. This last year, it wasn't quite as pronounced as you noticed. That one was still the low dip. We were still above average. But it bounced back and stayed more of a plateau than a increase. So that was good to see that there. It was a strong credit completion. Number two, increased parent communication. So as, as I mentioned, we went, our goal was twenty percent. We went with five percent of parent with the survey completed. However, we did have a whole lot more parent communication going out into a communication, which is good to see. So we had forty-two messages that I sent through talking points. We started a family newsletter, and we had a range from sixty-nine to a hundred and thirty-four, depending on the newsletter. And so that was fantastic to see that people are looking at the newsletter, and that's really handy. This, this more, we use this more like all the other schools in the district. You can see like the analytics of how many views it has, what links they clicked on, how many times they clicked on, and those kinds of things. So it was good to see that they were looking at the newsletter and interacting with the newsletter, following links, that kind of thing. So we were really pleased that they may not have done the survey, but they are engaged at this level of getting the information and also replying back in talking points. And number three, our highlight number three from last school year is student connectedness. So we have what's called a student engagement instrument. And so we, SEI for short. And of that, it's a thirty-four question survey that we give students that gives a little snapshot the moment in time of the students' connectedness. And of the survey results, we had a hundred percent of students that took it agreed or strongly agreed with those four statements. There's many more statements, but these are the ones that really stood out as a hundred percent agreement. Teachers are there for me when I need them. Overall, my teachers are open and honest with me. Overall, adults at my student, at my school treat students fairly, and I enjoy talking to teachers here. So a really strong connectedness through this survey. And we give this three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring, because we do have a transient population where they come in at different times during the year. So we want to try and catch all those different periods throughout the year. So that was really good to see that there's a really strong connection to the staff at the ALC. So this is the question that came up on the bullet on the right-hand side there. All students have a connection with a caring adult beyond their parents as they transition to middle school. I put that as they transition to middle school in quotes, because the ALC is nine through twelve. So we don't have the middle school there. Our middle school is a mid-level program within school, within a school at the middle school. And so this is just nine through twelve. So it's not the middle school part, but we do have a strong goal, a strong mission to have a caring adult for the students. And so we really focus on the first half of that statement and not so much the middle school part of that statement, if that makes sense. So the benchmark is for us, as we view it, all students have a connection with a caring adult beyond their parents. And that's kind of how we view it as, you know, it's still important even after the middle school transition. So that's the clarification of what that means and why we use that one. So focus areas. Now attendance is the first one. So we have two charts here. The one that has the red line again is the average. This one, you'll notice a difference in that credit completion we made, we were above average every green period. This one, we were slightly below average every green period. So attendance did suffer last year a little bit. So we were a little bit below. We weren't horribly below average, but we were just under the mark every grading period. So that's something focus area that we want to work on this year is to try and increase that attendance rate again. The other slide that I'm showing is just to give you some comparison. That's some other ALCs in our region. And our, the Northfield one is the tallest bar there. So this is ninety percent attendance. And so considered consistent attendance, our ninety percent attendance rate, as you can see compared to other ALCs is quite strong, more than double everyone else's. And so our overall attendance rate is pretty good. But for us, our bar is such that we want it to continually improve. We want it to get better. So it helps to look at two different perspectives, like our attendance rate, we were below average, but it's still like we're kind of crushing it in a way. So we like to just point that out. It's, it's going well. We want to just improve and get better. All right, focus area number two, credit completion. So although we had above average every grading period, these two charts highlight some things. So the one chart that has more blue than the other, that one is showing percent of credits, a hundred percent of credits earned. So if in a grading period, a student earned all their credits, got a hundred percent of their credits, that's what that's showing. And again, the red line is our average, the blue column is what we did last year. And so there again, we were above average of people getting all their credits every grading period, which is great. It's great to see. It was a highlight of the year. And so that was good. However, there's still not a hundred percent of students earning a hundred percent of their credits. And so there's room for growth there. And so that's why it's a focus area. You want to get more people earning more credits. The other chart is the opposite of that. So percent of students earning zero credit. So if they didn't earning any credit at all in that grading period, that's that other chart. And the good news with that is that, again, we're below average. So we did good, like more people were earning at least some credit. So that's a good thing. But again, there is still some blue on that chart. So there's still some room for growth that we want to try and get people earning more than zero credit. And so oftentimes, we have talks with students about, you know, some progress is better. So if you get zero, you're staying still. But if you can get some credit, you're still progressing towards that graduation mark. So. And then again, the last focus area is connectedness. We do have a strong connected as indicated in the highlights. But again, room for growth for us that, that drives the whole ship, if you will. And so we really want to have a strong connect, connection with the staff and the students and students to students. And so doing a lot of things to try and make that connection as strong as possible. So students do want to attend, do want to come to school, reengage in their education and those kinds of things. So we do quite a few different. We have mental health supports. We try and have field trips. We try and have activities that encourage just connecting with each other, whether that's students to teachers or students to students. And so we try and do a lot of other things to try and increase that connectedness, a little bit of tongue twister. And then for employees, same thing to have the employees feel connected to the workplace. We do that through rounding primarily and then following up with continuous improvement conversations of how can we improve this, make this feel better? That is the end and also the graduating class of twenty-two, four on the board. Questions at all?
Fantastic. Thank you, Daryl. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thanks for being here, Daryl. Appreciate it. Looking forward to this every year. Just one comment and one question for you. So first comment, I appreciate the numbers around student engagement and that tool showing such strong support. I know when Claudia and I went to the ALC graduation this year, it's one of my favorite events every year. That's on full display when you hear the speeches from the teachers and the response from the students, and whether they've been there for three years or three months, you can see there, there's a real effort to make a connection and make those students feel welcome. So I just want to give kudos for that. It's one of my favorite events every year. Thank you. In terms of a question, grade four or the grade four period, why historically do you think there's a dip that period versus the other ones? I mean, it's cold for five months. So and I know it's around the holidays, but maybe you have some more data around that.
So I do have a theory, a working theory, we'll call it. So for how our grading periods play out, it's about one per month. That one, because of breaks, it gets broken up. And so we have a little chunk of grading period, and then we have winter break, and then we have a little more of that grading period. And so we have an attendance policy where if students miss too many, then they lose credit and they have to do something to make that credit back up. So what does happen is that first little bit before break, students get into some attendance things. And then when they have break, they come back and they think, okay, this is all good. Not remembering that before break, you miss sometimes. So now you can't miss anymore. And so that gets some people in some, some trouble. So that just the timing of that break. And it's, it's, you know, we've tried to figure out other ways to get around that, but just how the calendar works, it's tough. And so that typically is a lot of the, most of the working with students to try and regain credits or regain attendance, that kind of thing. Green period four is the top of that list. That's where a lot of that happens just because of that timing of the break and things.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up. I know you said it's about a month. So is it twenty academic days is a grading period?
Yeah, like twenty. Well, so this year we have a range from nineteen is the shortest one to twenty-three is the longest.
You have to nestle them in between the larger calendar.
Yep. Yep. So basically what we do is we take the semesters and the quarters, and then each quarter we divvy into two grading periods. So like each quarter is like quarter one is green periods, one and two for us. It works that way. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else comments?
Thank you, Daryl, for the presentation and congratulations to you and your staff for a successful year.
Thank you.
I have four questions for you.
All right.
All right. They're easy, though.
I'm gonna take a drink of water for this one.
So my first question was, is how popular was the ethnic studies class? And do you think it'll grow in popularity or?
Yeah. Yeah. So it was popular. We did. So we've been working on our equity for a number of years. So before the ethnic studies course, we had communication and culture courses, what we called it, and went through our English. And that was also just looking at other cultures, how they communicate, that kind of thing. And so that kind of primed the pump, so to speak, if you will, about having that interest in other cultures and other aspects of viewing things. And so the ethnic studies really was well received by the students.
Excellent. Okay. Question number two, it was about the parent survey. I mean, I, I was happy to see parents engaged in other ways. Do you think that'll lead to increased parent surveys? Or is it, is it, what's your theory on why only five percent of the parents return the surveys?
That's, that's a tough one. I do hope that it does lead to giving us feedback that way. Because right now there's, it, it's similar to our students who are meeting them where they're at. And so however they come to us, that's where we meet them and work with them. And right now, that's the same approach we're taking with families as well. So if they're meeting us with newsletters, they're interested in that level, let's go with that and let's like work on that. Hopefully, we can get to the part where they can give us some feedback on this is going well and this is not going well. Right now, we do get a lot of anecdotal stories of this is great or this, you know, this part was frustrating or something like that, but it hasn't translated to us actual taking of the survey.
Okay. So, so far, so good.
Far so good.
So my next question is a little, little dicey here. The SEI survey, you had four questions that were all excellent, and then they're, they're great questions to have high scores. And so congratulations on that. But you said there was like thirty-one questions on it. And that led me to be curious as to what's at the opposite end of the questions that people were not in agreement with?
So that's a great question. So there are different groups. And so when I, I share that with, and we do, we have what's called a map stars class. So it's our version of student council. And so when the SEI is done, we share the results with the map stars class and say, okay, here's some of our lower areas. How can we work on these? And and we use that to problem solve some of those areas. And so there's like a teacher to student connectedness section, a student to student connectedness, a general area of like, I feel safe at school. That's a question that we typically are pretty, that wasn't a hundred percent, but it was one person didn't disagreed, not strongly disagreed, but disagreed. And so we've followed up with map stars to say, how can we get this to a hundred percent? What, you know, what do you think it is? Why do they not feel safe? And then have that conversation with that, with that group. And so the, the lower area, again, it wasn't really low, but the lower area that we're working on, and we've had this as a PLC goal for a couple of years, is our student to student connect and connections. And so some students are feeling like, oh, yeah, I have some connections. I have some friends here and others are not quite there yet. So they're doing their own thing. And so we want to just make them feel as welcome and respected as possible. So we have worked on that in PLCs to try and get that student to student connections as strong as possible.
If you can do that, I think it'll help with your attendance as well. Yeah.
For sure.
All right. My last question. Thank you for all your patience. But I know you also do our online school. And I just would like a few sentences about how this year has been, whether there's still interest in it, what we're doing.
Yep. Yeah. So we do. So Big Nine Online, we do have interest in Big Nine Online. We had about fifty secondary students. There was only about four elementary students last year. So the elementary was quite low, but there was some families taking advantage of that. There it, it, when, when we had our own in-house, there was a little more transition this year. This past year, it was a little more stable where there wasn't as much. kind of coming into the program and leaving the program. It was a little more stable throughout the year. So that was a difference from previous years. But yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pocket of interest, but it's, it's not super widespread, I would say.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else comment or question? Jenny?
Thank you, Claudia. Thanks, Daryl, for the presentation. I had four questions, but Amy took one. So now we're, we're down to three. So the ALC is ninth through twelfth graders. But my, my question is, do you ever see any of the eighth graders coming directly from the middle school to the ALC? Or do they transition first to the high school typically? And then if they're losing credit or have issues with that, then they enter the ALC?
Yep. So that's a good question. So we are nine through twelve, but we're very heavy on eleven through twelve, eleven and twelfth graders. Not so much on ninth and tenth graders. The high school over the years has just introduced more and more interventions. And so we as a district want them to try the high school and give that a chance since there are a lot of supports at the high school. And so we try and encourage that first to like, give it a try, see how it goes. And because we have a lot of grading periods, we can always switch if need be. So very rarely, most of the time, most years, it's zero or one incoming ninth graders start at the ALC. But oftentimes we'll have them start, maybe even if it's just the first semester at the high school, just to see how that goes and give those interventions and supports to try first before we try the ALC.
Wonderful. And then on your focus for attendance, can you just talk a little bit about your process for determining excused and unexcused absences in those? Or, or do you not have, you know, have decipher between the two? Do you just have a policy where it's any absence?
So we do have excuse, unexcuse. And it's the same as the district policy. So if it's called in by a parent, it would be excused. For us, the things that count are the ones that if they have no choice, whether or not, so court, for example, the court will say, here's the date that you have to be at court. The student has no choice. They have to miss school that day because they have to go to court. And so those don't count against them. And so there's certain things, doctor appointments don't count against them. So there's certain things that don't count towards that absentee out, if you will. And there are other things that we work with families or work with students with if something's going on, crisis or something that we can work with them to talk through it and figure out a plan. So part of the policy is the same as the district policy. And then there's a little bit of uniqueness to the ALC.
Okay. And then you had mentioned mental health supports. Would that be through teachers or counselors or a combination?
Uh, is, well, as many as we can get wherever we can get it is the, so we've, we've tried with Fernbrook, but we've just haven't had a chance to get that position filled. And so we've partnered with CAC and we have some things with CAC where we're have some partnerships to support mental health. And then we also have worked with agencies and I have some meetings this summer to try and find some people where we can put as many supports in place as we can.
But and for right now, has, has most of your, your staff gone through like any mental health training?
Yep. The mental health first aid.
First aid.
Yep. They've all been through that. Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I sent her a comment for now. Yes, Ben.
Thanks, Daryl. Just a quick kind of fundamental question or for those that maybe don't understand the grading period system and, you know, what somebody needs to do to earn a credit or not. Can you kind of describe that? Like, what's a, what does a grading period look like from a student standpoint?
Yep.
How do they earn credit or how might they not?
Yeah. So we have, so there's eight grading periods and in the, in that grading period, our schedule, we have eight periods in a day. And so the period, the, that schedule is very similar to like a miniature version of the high school where they have classes that they'll go, go to from class to class, different teachers. They typically are much smaller than like your average size classes. So we try and cap them at fifteen or fewer. And so we try and keep that number low for other reasons. And so that's best practice for ALCs is to have a fifteen or lower class number. And so we try and keep that at fifteen. And so as they're going through, they'll do assignments, do that kind of thing. And then for that, at the end of that twenty-two days or so, then they get that grade and then that goes into their transcripts. So our transcripts are quite a bit longer than the high school transcripts because they have eight grading periods instead of just two. And so they do tend to get longer with, you know, eight classes, eight grading periods, it, it gets a little lengthy. But the good thing is it's scaffolding or chunked. And so a lot of students, a lot of families really appreciate that where in twenty-two days, if it goes great, excellent, you got that credit. If it doesn't go so great in twenty-two days, you can start over and try again. And so you don't have to sustain that grade for a long amount of time. It's like short bursts, short wins. And so we, every twenty-two days or so, they get a new grading period. And then the attendance also starts over. And so they get a kind of a fresh beginning eight times throughout the school year.
Anyone else? I'm Daryl.
Oh, yes. And I have one question.
So Daryl, would you just talk two items? One would be, you talked about the mental health supports, but typically about the community and then the staff treatment. Could you highlight the specialized positions that you have, your full-time counselor, that kind of thing?
Yep.
And then I think it's also good for the community to hear what are the criteria? I think a lot of people focus on credit completion and attendance, but there's a number of reasons that students would qualify for the ALC.
Right.
So would you just go through those two items?
Yep. So we do have the supports that we've over the years have been able to increase and, and sustain as a full-time counselor, which is very helpful. So we have Paul Stanton is our counselor. He's full-time. And then we have the partnership that we have with the CAC as a social work position. And so they're a CAC employee, but we contract them out. And so it's, it's, it's a good position for us because we are able to have the social work there pretty much full-time at a reduced rate for us. And so we have a social worker there pretty much full-time. And then we do have another CAC partnership that's started last year. We're doing again this year. It's a peer recovery specialist. And so it's someone that can help with chemical health things, but also last year was very focused on chemical health. This year it's opened a little bit where we, that person took another job and the new person that has taken that role has a health background. So there's some chemical health support that's can happen, but also mental health and also disordered eating came up last year. This person has experience with that. And so some of those other aspects, we're happy that to have that kind of expanded this year for supports. And so to go into Dr. Hillman's other point, so there's twelve criteria to get into an ALC. It's statute. It's if you go to any ALC in the state of Minnesota, you have to meet at least one of these twelve criteria. Two of them are only specific to the metro. And so they don't, any out of state other than Minneapolis. They don't qualify or it doesn't matter. But our number one qualifier is being behind in credits to graduate. So if they're behind in credits at all, that's a qualifier to go to the, to an ALC. And so that's our number one. Normally it's ninety percent of our students qualify with that one. A couple of the other ones, mental health. For us, that's about fifty percent students indicate that there's mental health, something. Another fairly common one is truancy. So truancy, or if they've withdrawn from school, so if they've dropped out of school officially, that would be another qualifier. If they've been expelled, that would be a qualifier. If they're behind in standardized tests, that'd be a qualifier significantly behind, I should say. That would be a qualifier. If they're English language students, that's another qualifier. If they've experienced homelessness in the last six months, that would be a qualifier. If they've experienced physical or sexual abuse, that would be another qualifier. So those are the students and basically what that is, this is back in the eighties when this legislation happened, is that the, the statistics came out where if one of these things, if a student was experiencing one of these things, they were less likely to graduate. And so then they formed the idea of ALCs and saying, oh, these are students that are at risk of not graduating on time or at all. And so then they formed ALC, the idea or the concept to provide that program for students if they met one of these. And so our goal is to have for those qualifiers have supports in place for those things. So that students that are coming in with that. A lot of the behinding credits is they've just throughout their education career become disengaged with school. And so we're trying to reengage them and re-energize them to enjoy learning again. So that's a common one. But there's also things like mental health crisis or homelessness is a tough one because they got bigger things on their mind. And then in school, it's tough to focus. And so just trying to help support those things of whatever's happening.
And I, my question to you, Daryl, was, um, remind me, how many students are at the ALC?
So we typically are, last year we were, for the, for a first time since I've been there, we were slightly over a hundred and kind of sustained that for quite a while. It used to be many years ago was like sixties, then it went up into the eighties. And so now we've reached the hundred mark. And so we're about a hundred students for most of the year.
You were saying about how different parts of the year you might see a different cohort of students. And so I just wanted to hear you again, reflect on those students who had earned zero credit, in fact, could be on the last grading period. It might reflect, well, first of all, it's going to be a handful of students because you have such a small population. And then it could be new students to the school. Yeah, any number of things. So if you could just reflect on.
Yeah. So, so some of the success stories, like last year we had a student that comes to mind that the year before was frequently on the zero or very low credit earned. And then last year, you know, whether you call it maturity or the light bulb or whatever you want to call that, just, yep. And just had a great year and earned all their credits all year. And so it was great to see. And then they were, it was a senior. So they were able to graduate on time because they had such a great year. And so we, again, our staff believes that connectedness is the root of all that. And so if they are connected, if they're feeling valued at the school, that's where that kind of comes from. And so that's why it is our highlight and focus area, all in one. And so trying to just make sure that those students feel that safety of, of the program.
Incredibly supportive program. And like where you mentioned, the graduations very touching because those students have such an incredible connection to those teachers.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Right.
Just want to let board members know, you may have noticed on slide eleven, there was one chart that hadn't been updated, was updated after we published the packet. So we'll send you a new copy of that slide deck tomorrow. So if you were paying close attention, there was one chart that was different and we'll make sure you get the updated slide deck tomorrow.
Okay, we have the high school's continuous improvement showcase and Principal Shane Byer will provide the board with an overview of the high school's successes and highlights for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four and the focus areas for the new academic year. Welcome all of you, Becca Rico.
Yes, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share our story. I would say it felt a little bit like an Olympic challenge. Fifteen minutes to share about our high school. It is a, is a really a tall order, but we'll do the best we can. So I, I'm Shane Byer. Starting my third year at Northfield High School, I'm going to do introduce my team members, then we'll get into the presentation.
Good evening. Pleasure to be here to share. Like Shane said, we have lots to share and it's hard to put into fifty minutes. I'm Rico Born, one of the assistant principals, grades ten to twelve this year.
Thank you for welcoming us. My name is Becca Bang and I'm the other assistant principal.
Right. Well, I would just say that before we move on from Daryl, because she was a wonderful presentation of the ALC and then the partnership we have with them was really tremendous. I mean, we work together daily. And, and as students come and go between our two systems, we try to make that a really a smooth come and go. So, you know, in the spirit of giving students what they need. Well, I think we're on to our presentation. Northfield High School Raiders lead is sort of kind of permeates, it's going to increasingly become language that will be synonymous with our high school. This idea, when I create a culture that is about developing leaders, leaders of self, service to others. And so this is a team that actually does some work this summer in preparation for the fall to continue the development for our students and our staff. And so there won't be a lot of discussion specifically about that today, but the, the whole general sense of building the culture of leadership and excellence is absolutely our work. There we go. And as far as this goes, I, I, I think Dr. Hillman's put the curse on me. Every time I see this, I think of his words about, well, if we've seen, you're getting tired of hearing this, you're probably about halfway there. Right? So this really does guide our work. I, I, I appreciate the, the, you know, the boardroom to the classroom sort of mentality that we all utilize this work. I find it very interesting when I interview new people, candidates for teaching or whatever it might be, is they always comment on how the intrigue of, of the language and the structure of our strategic plan. So I think this is, the district should be commended on the work that's been done here. And it's connected to this, you'll probably hopefully hear this throughout our presentation tonight, the, the directions as well as, as the benchmarks. And the showcase tonight, we're going to start with, I, I listed one of our goals just because of the short nature of this presentation today. I think it really fits well with the ALC conversation. So we, we have, when I arrived here three years ago, it seemed to make sense to align our, one of our achievement goals with the achievement integration plan. And so if you can see that this goal is written from a sort of a deficit mindset, right? This idea, we want to reduce them or students not on track. So I just flipped it in the graph. The graph is a baseline of what, where we were in two thousand and twenty-two around students on track for graduation based on credit attainment. And so you can see that seventy-three percent is where we started. And we are now at eighty-five percent. And you can see on the average, but you can see the different grade levels, how they're showing up in there. So I'm encouraged to see that eighty, eighty-four point eight percent of our ninth graders are on track. And the red is the FRP group, a group that can tend to be not attending as often. And so there's lots of correlation between grades and attendance. So that's probably one of the biggest factors for this group of students. So our goal is to close that gap, right? And do the things that are going to be, help us to get our students to show up on time, show up at school in general and engage. And so I think that ninth grade is a exciting trend. Hopefully our tenth grade as well, if, or at that target. Our goal was to be at least eighty-seven percent of our students in the FRP group to be on track for graduation by the spring of twenty-five and that group was already there. So that's encouraging. We have some work to do with our eleventh graders that are going to be seniors. There, I would suspect some urgency from that group going into their senior year. And, and I think there'll be some of that group of students that will end up taking some ALC experiences to help expedite that process. And then our, our current, our, our graduating seniors were obviously at that number or close to it, which allowed them to walk across the stage and and get their diploma. Highlight, I think that's you.
Great.
Yeah.
So when we think about earning credits, we had to have action steps, right? And this is not going to be a new graphic for you. You've seen it before. This is the way, this is the how we do that. Really, it was just introduced at the very beginning of the school year, two years ago now, high impact teaching strategies. So when we have our students in our classroom, one of the things that we've been really focusing on, both at the building and honestly district level is working in professional development that is research-based, helping our students and teachers have the most effective classrooms that we can have. So that's been a part of our PLC work every single Wednesday. So thank you to community members for continuing to support that late start Wednesday. Cause that's the time where we really have that ongoing professional development and ineffective teaching strategy. So you can kind of see the graphic is what we're working on, but that's been a part of our story. And I feel very confident in saying every single teaching staff member in our building is aware of, familiar with, can speak the language of it. So we're ready to really start having deeper questions there. That's not something that's going to go away. But we have that baseline or that base really strongly developed to start going deeper with some of those instructional strategies moving forward.
Highlight two is one that really hits home with me. I, this is year five for me. Can you believe that? And I don't live in Northfield and I come here every day and get out of bed because I love it. I love this community and I love the staff. I love what we have created. So I really want to hone in. I've seen since COVID to when Mr. Byer came to what we're doing and it is truly a positive learning environment, just a positive environment overall. And I think you've heard us say trust and inspire versus command and control. And I think that's reverberated throughout the whole staff and it trickles down to the students. Sir Byer did talk about Raiders lead, giving those students the capacity to lead, leaders of self is first, but also lead with each other. But then again, working with staff as a family. And then leadership development among staff and students alike. Multi-tiered system of support, MTSS. I believe this is our main driver of all the systems that we have in our school. You've heard it. You've heard of the baseline eighty, fifteen and five. And we educate the whole child. We don't just look at the academic. And we educate the whole child. We don't just look at the academic side. That's a huge, huge important important factor. But also uh behavior discipline referrals as well. And I'm proud to point out as we are on the front lines, um when you're thinking about discipline referrals, it's teachers refer students. We are at ninety-three percent, okay, ninety-three percent, six and one. And I'll break that down for you. Ninety-three percent of students of our student body has zero to one referral. That equates to one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine students as one, zero to one. Um I guess as you get to tier two, six percent, two to five, two to five referrals. That's huge. That equates to seventy-three students. And I bet you we do know those students by name. But even if you get to the top, the one percent, this is where I really am celebrating. This um highlight number two is that one percent with six or more referrals and that equates to twelve students. And again, we know all those names. Relationships are huge. Um supports are there behaviorally and academically. Um. Parent satisfaction too. I just want to bring this up. It's our greatest improvements from twenty from last year, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. We're just going to read these because they're they're just big. They're huge. I believe school rules are enforced consistently at the school. And that's reflected. I if you if I were to go back, that's reflected with our ninety ninety-three, six and one. Um I believe school administrators make decisions that are in the best interest of children. I trust and inspire restorative practices that we have implemented since COVID. Um I believe my child is recognized for good work and behavior at the school. I believe the school positively impacts my child's growth and their growth and development. There's the whole child that we're talking about. And again, this is one that we all need to put a feather in our hat. Is I'm proud to say that I have a child that that attends the school, not only the school, but the school district. Uh highlight three, student engagement. Again, this is kind of it plays off of uh the environment that we create at Northfield High School. We want our students engaged and like Daryl said, we want all of our kids at Northfield Public Schools uh to be connected. Um as Shane mentioned before, is a is a group of free and reduced price students. If you look at twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, there they are at seventy-three percent on track for graduation and it trends up to where we are twelve points behind um non-FRP. So that is something that we celebrate, that is a trajectory that we will look into the future to to even close even uh faster and quicker with all the supports that we have. Um the other half of this highlight three, which is hits equity, is uh if you look at that up and down, um AP exams taken, we are at five hundred and seventy-seven. That's just amazing. Um we are trying to, we have had the highest number of students, seventy-four percent of stu- our students uh score an AP test score of three or higher. And that has college implications depending on where they go to school. So that that is outstanding. Um we have also with this AP grant, over two years, we've hired a success coach. Another layer of support that will support students, not only just our at-risk students, but all students. We have a cohort of eighth graders that are transitioning to them to the high school that's going to need some specific support that is in wrapped in this in this uh layer of support as well. Um three hundred in this, I'll leave you with this, three hundred and thirty-two students took one or more AP exams to total five hundred and seventy-seven that you see under there for spring twenty twenty-four. That screams student engagement. It also screams the staff removing barriers and saying, hey, you want this risk? We have layers of support to support you. We're going to support you. Take that risk. We want you in there. Prerequisites have been gone, barriers have been lifted. And students of color can see themselves taking AP and going to four-year colleges, not just four-year, but post-secondary options, trades, two-year programs, outstanding.
Similar to Daryl, because we must think alike. I'd be okay with me. He's a pretty outstanding guy. Uh that we have our area of focus and our area of uh highlight uh is one of the same. And so, you know, for me, as I think about the credits, it's about, yes, let's get the credit. But what's in that credit is the next logical question, right? And what's the learning degree of learning that's happening when you're in that credit? And what's our degree of college readiness or and career readiness? And so that's that will be our focus in the coming years to go deeper into listifying rigor. What's that look like in my classroom? What are the implications for for me as a teacher? What are the implications for my students? Because at the end of the day, we want them to have agency in their learning, right? We're not doing things to students. We're doing things with them, right? Trust and inspire culture. This is about their their experience. And so we want to have them believing that they can reach their full potential. They can persist through problems, right? COVID, which I don't often mention anymore, just behind there somewhere, right? But our students really came through that with some with some uh damage, if you will, some struggle and and persisting through problems. I I feel like they're regaining that capacity, which is really encouraging. But you can't assume that's going to happen. You have to intentionally build that. And so that to me is uh why I think our whole system is really about trying to create a a focus on community, building relationships, uh helping our students to see themselves as amazing and, you know, anything's possible. That's our goal. And so our our intent in advancing that career and college and career readiness is to for the developer systems to support students, to give them what they need when they need it. Uh from the AP grant that seventy-five thousand over two years, we partnered with Torch. For so we have a halftime position, Torch has the other half and we'll be helping support students who are tuned into AP courses that are maybe underrepresented and try to give them some extra support, some some touch points, um partnering with the colleges and getting more student tutors in uh to help uh scaffold that this support for our students so they can be successful.
Our last focus area is student attendance. Um wise mentors often will say the most important thing you can do when you're trying to have success is just show up. And that's not just true for people seeking leadership roles, but it's also true for our students. Um we can't support students as effectively if they're not in our building. And um like most schools across the country, this is still something that we need to work on. Um so we do have some goals set around attendance. Um and we're trying to look at it through a positive lens here. So you're going to see that we are currently the seventy-three and I want to make a comparison to Daryl's presentation because when you think about attendance, there's a couple of different kinds of ways you can measure attendance data. So we're at ninety-three percent of our students attend daily. But that within that, there's also people who aren't there any given day. And so when we're thinking about chronic absence, that's who in our building misses ten percent or more of school? And how do we increase the number of people who are here regularly? Um because we know that if you miss ten percent of school, you're more likely to fail the class. You're not going to see as much success in that class. So we are shooting for going from seventy-three point nine percent of our students who attend school regularly to eighty-two percent by the end of this school year. And it's going to take some strategic adult actions. I'm really excited about some of the work team ideas that were generated this summer. Um so we had teachers and counselors, administrators working together to think about, how do we not just communicate? Because last year we spent a lot of energy and effort communicating to families. So I don't think a single family that attends the high school didn't know that attendance is important after last year. And yet there are still barriers that keep some of our students from attending regularly. Um so with some strategic adult actions, we can prioritize those students that have already shown up in our data as needing that extra layer of tier two support. And we are all hands on deck this year. So every single licensed staff member is going to work hard to create partnerships strategically with two different families um to provide support by creating regular communications home or talking through talking points to make sure we're connecting with those families, giving up attendance updates, helping inform them, um setting some goal sessions, meetings with the families around attendance early in the year and then having those frequent check-ins with that student. So kind of that mentor mentee relationship. We're really hoping that this super strategic action can help make a difference for our students that need it most. Those are our three highlights and our three focus areas for the coming school year. And at this time, we're ready to take any questions uh or comments that you might have.
Thank you so much. Board members, any questions or comments? All right.
Thank you, Shane, Rico and Becca for the fantastic presentation. Obviously, you had a lot to be happy about. So congratulations on your successes last year and look forward to the focus areas this year and seeing some improvement there as well. And it sounds like you have some sound strategies to get there. I have one question concerning the AP offerings. Uh obviously fantastic numbers to see that increase year over year. You talked to Rico a little bit about, you know, the two-year coordinator position to help support that or maybe it wasn't coordinator, but to your position to help support that, removing some of the barriers for students and just the overall engagement. Uh when it comes to AP courses offered or tests offered, has that been consistent over this same period of time? I know we've had some fluctuation and uh classes offered and I also know enrollment varies year to year. So I'm just curious if it's a baseline for what's available to students.
Yeah, Becca really wants to talk because she's sort of sort of the AP coordinator, but I but I'm the scheduler. We we kind of share the duties here. Uh the budget reductions had an impact. So even even in uh this past year, we didn't offer AP government or AP econ because our numbers weren't quite large enough to offer a section. But they're back this this year. With um but even with those two two last courses, our numbers were the highest it ever been. So that's encouraging. Uh so we'll continue to do our best to offer all the things um and get get the opportunities in front of students. Becca, I'll share.
Yeah, I was just going to add that I think we are continuing to add some of the courses that we're looking at. We're also going to have a um AP computer science course that's going to be offered um this coming school year or the following. Um obviously, some of it's just student enrollment based and where there's interest. And I think what's a real highlight is that we're seeing some of our classes be so popular with our students that it's the norm to take that course. So for example, half of our junior class takes the AP world course. Um so I think it's not just what is offered, but it's that those courses that we offer are being taught really, really well and in a way where all of our students can access that coursework.
Thank you all for being here and for your presentation. And I just want to say I like that you all present together because it shows the teamwork in the high school and you're physically representing the teamwork that you have every day, I'm sure. Um I actually have several sort of areas of questions. Um the first one is I want to continue with the AP questioning since you brought up the topic. I think it's great that we offer AP classes. I have experience with college admissions at two big-name colleges. Um and um so I I know how important AP exams can be for admissions. Um and then my one of my questions, it's great people are taking them. That's certainly the first step. But how does that translate into the scores that they are getting on the AP test? Are are we getting a lot of threes, fours and fives and?
Yeah, I think I I don't have that all the specific data in front of me. Just one of the highlights that Rico I think shared was that seventy-four percent of the students who take the exam get a three or three or higher. So that's a really, that's really solid.
And are we getting very many fives?
I don't have the distribution. I I would be, you'd be, you wouldn't be surprised by the number. I mean, there's some high-performing students in the system. I I mean, I'm in awe. I'd love, I could certainly share that more detailed script with you, but for tonight, what I'm saying to you is our students perform well.
Okay.
Those that those that are engaged in AP do well. And so our our goal is to, like I talked about earlier, one of our areas of focus is advance that college and career readiness. More students in AP coursework is going to help us and those even that aren't, right? Having good curriculum materials in front of students is really critical. And I I'm so excited about the circ cycle that um hope is has been leading the last several years and will lead into the future. That's that's a that's a game changer. Because you're putting curriculum materials in front of teachers that are predictable, high fidelity. They don't have to spend all the time searching for stuff. They're they're engaging students in that curriculum in meaningful ways is really what we're after.
Well, and I appreciate all the efforts that you're doing for our free and reduced-priced lunch kids. But I also appreciate having the challenges, you know, challenging curriculum and the opportunities for the kids who are doing well already. You have to have both, I think, to have a successful school. So just want to put that in there. My my next question is I wanted to ask a little bit about the very first statistics with the eleventh grader free and reduced-priced lunch, only seventy-six point two percent being on track for graduation compared to even like the twelfth graders, which was much higher. And I'm wondering if that's a cohort question or if that's because a lot of those kids end up going to the ALC and then then the the high school numbers get changed or whether, you know, it's it's something about eleventh grade.
Yeah, I, you know, I honestly don't really have a great answer. I haven't really unpacked that data to know exactly why that is. I think our team is going to need to do that as we lead into the year, our teachers. We do like uh we offer teachers uh once we give everybody get their classes settled. We we offer a playbook of student data for for each teacher. They can see who's behind in credits, where they are, and that's partly how we drive some of the intentional conversations and and relationships we have with students partner with them and help them to to see that the journey ahead of them is possible. And so that'll be some of the work we have to do. Our site team meeting is on Thursday and we're trying to gear up for workshop week. And how are we going to best support the realities of the students we're serving at this junior class for one? Uh I I was, the good news is they're going to have urgency going into their senior year and we want to make sure we're ready to help support them on that journey.
And you're paying attention to the problem or what the potential problem. All right, so my last area of a question. Um I don't know if you're going to be staying for the rest of the meeting. We're discussing the citizenship handbook tonight. And as I was reading through that handbook, I noticed a lot of possibilities for suspension. And and in the way it's phrased is, you know, it can be any, it it can be this, but it's not limited to this. But then it would list one to three-day suspension or five to ten-day suspensions. And it just got me thinking about suspensions in general and wondering how frequently we have suspensions. And I, yeah, I have a little bit of a concern for suspensions because then I worry that that's harming the student too because they're out of the classroom. And I was just wondering if you could speak on that.
Yeah, I think I think that's a that's a great question. And uh I mean, if you go back to our data on the about eighty, fifteen, five and and the number of students that are showing up in our behavior referrals, it's not many. Right? But if if those students, I mean, if you're looking at each student matters, then your question's important, right? And so we're we're definitely paying attention to, that's not the first place we go. But you know, if we have a health and safety issue that's against community standards and that's what the board has approved as far as we're not, we're not okay with uh harming someone, then the alternative to not suspending, what what might that be? Um but certainly that continuum of of uh supports for students leading up to suspension, especially if it's not a high-profile health and safety issue as we do lots of work prior to that for sure, a lot of restorative building, you know, repairing the harm through uh restorative practices and, you know, working with students on on skill development. Uh so so that we don't end up in a place where we're suspending students. That's never our goal.
I appreciate your sort of unpacking that, but then I still have the question in my mind of about how many students get suspended each year?
Uh that's a good question. I think I I'll give an example. So if if we think about number of the number of fights in our school, probably twelve students in the year suspended for fighting. You go to a high school thirty miles north of here and you're probably looking at numbers considerably higher than that, right? So part of it is we're we're trying to create a culture that doesn't put us in the kids or ourselves in a spot where we have no place to go. Right? So it's about it's about how you what culture you create. And we have a flex period every day for an hour and most of the time, it's it works out beautifully. Right? It's about giving students agency, ownership in their day, right? Helping students to recognize. In fact, I heard the day one of our students who is a returning senior mentioned that, yeah, we have, we have a lot, we're going to have a lot of work to do with our ninth graders as they're trying to reboot flex. Because every you every two years, teachers vote on whether we're going to do flex or not. And has that has a lot to do with how students show up and students know that. And so students are helping each other on this journey. Like there's not enough adults in that building to make this environment what it's supposed to be. We we need to, we need to lean on our students and we create the conditions for that. So do we suspend students? Yes. Do we do everything we can to avoid that by using other strategies? Of course. But but our handbook does have language that specifies when these conditions are met. This at this point is is a is an option that we need to consider in order to keep our environment safe. Yeah.
I mean, you said that we were a team and I I know that when we have a suspension is just a term that we just hate to use. Um but when we do face a situation, a student situation, this is we are always, I just want to make, no, no, we're always conferring with each other. We're turning things on its ear. We're looking at different angles. We're calling Dr. Hillman. And and throughout that, if a student is suspended, the student is supported at home. COVID taught us one thing is online is great. So uh hours of service for special ed students are are still in in concert with that. And um and then the reentry is a huge thing I want to point out is that we just don't welcome the kids back. We sit down, we make a plan, support staff is with. Sometimes we're uh together on this, Shane, Mr. Byer comes in as well. So it's not a process that we want and we're always like Mr. Byer said, we're always looking for alternatives. But again, uh having a plan to support that student so that doesn't But again, having a plan to support that student so that doesn't happen again.
That's huge.
I just have one more addition, just kind of anecdotal. I think we can give you the exact data on number as well, but most weeks, we don't suspend a student at Northfield High School. And I think that's different than most of the surrounding districts. So if you're trying to get your, like a number in your head, most weeks, there isn't one.
Thank you for all the reassurances and I'm done now.
I'll echo Amy and say thanks team. Show up and I think a great leadership team at our high school. I appreciate that as somebody that's going to have two students there next year, next year. That's exciting. I've got a sticky question and then maybe an easier question, but I'll start with a sticky one. So it ties back to one of Amy's questions with the student handbook, but I know we'll be looking at that this evening. There's been a lot of, I think buzz in the news around cell phones right now. In terms of, you know, different states taking different approaches. From a leadership standpoint at the high schools, what's been our experience around cell phones recently?
Yeah, it's a great question and it just so happens that we're engaged in that as we speak. I've been meeting with stakeholders this, the summer, parents and students and staff. And we're working our way through that plan. We, we've had a procedure in the play, always had it, there's been a policy in place. It hasn't been very effectively engaged, if you will. And so a lot of research this summer, working with our students, using some of the resources that the school board association has put out. Actually, we're hosting Center Man on Thursday. And so I think for me, I go back to the trust and inspire culture. Right? On one hand, it's like, yep, the easy thing, let's just get rid of cell phones entirely. And that's certainly an approach that some people might take. And this, you know, if that's what this community desires, then guess somebody will tell me that. In the meantime, what I'm hearing, we did a stakeholder survey for parents and our staff. And it appears that people want some level of, of guidance around that and restriction around that. So our focus as of right now, we are meeting as a leadership team on Thursday. And then I have workshop week starts the 22nd of August. Get that in front of staff, see what they think, how might we best maneuver this? Because we, you and I both know that as parents and as people that work in industry, the people, the adults are people that do the thing are what matters. The procedure itself is important, but it's what we do. Can we live, can we, can we make it play out in the way we intended it? So that'll be part of our work as a staff to get around that. But really common sense approach that says basically during instruction time, the cell phone is put away. It's not a choice, right? We have sort of the red light, yellow light, green light concept. And the green light we're saying is going to be reserved. And this, this is not in front of staff yet, so the public is hearing this, right? But it's very draft form. But the idea would be the green would be those times that are outside the classroom, flex time, before after school, right? Passing time. That's, that's the green light time. The yellow light time will be teacher directed, right? And that's going to look differently, I would think, for a senior group than a ninth grade group, right? If I'm a ninth grade teacher, my students coming out of the middle school, I might be red light pretty much all the time, right? We have, we have devices one to one, so there's technology access all the time anyway. So really common sense approach, but really dialing in on instruction. We want that to be focused and minimize the distractions in that time. And I think that's where, where we're going to land.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that and I appreciate you sharing that with the board. I think it's important to hear for this board to hear kind of your experiences and, you know.
Well, in the end, I mean, we're, we have students that are less than a year away from being, doing their own thing. And so we want them to be able to show up at a place of business and know when to have that thing in their pocket and when to have it out, right? So we can't just, by eliminating it from their existence, isn't probably the most practical thing to do at this moment. But you know, community standards matter, right? So if we have some focus groups and people say we want to do something different with cell phones, then we're going to have to engage around that. But right now, this is what I'm hearing and I brought people together for that purpose so that we aren't going to miss the mark.
All right, another fun question.
If each one of you share maybe one thing you're really excited about for this upcoming year.
I came in with this graduating class during COVID and, and went through four years and was exceptionally proud of what they've been through the last four years. But this particular, particular graduating class had a lot of siblings in eighth grade that have said, this is a great school. You have people, you have connection here. It's a trust and inspire. So I have a few in my mind right now that I cannot wait because they are brothers and sisters of some of the kids that we've worked with and I just can't wait to welcome them. School can't get here quick enough?
I, I guess I would just say it's, it's really exciting coming into year three after really revamping a lot of systems to just feel like we're in it now. Like I'm, it's not one specific thing, but when we talk about our attendance plan, when we talk about instructional practices and coaching and guiding our teachers, like we're not at the, let's get on the same page, but vocabulary anymore. We're like in the meat of it, having the deep questions and really thinking creatively about what we do next. And that fires me up.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to go where we started today, Raiders Lead. I'm, I'm not excited for the name of that because that's just a name. I'm excited for that playing out in our culture. We had thirty-five staff members on six to seven different teams this summer doing work to refine, rebuild, reimagine systems that are going to help us help students be better. CCR, flex, MTSS systems, cell phones, family engagement. So there's a lot of work and it's not Shane standing at the helm telling people that here's what we're going to do. We're doing this together, which is disciplinary leadership. It's, it's our Raiders Lead, developing capacity in people. Because we know that as leaders, there's, we're better shoulder to shoulder than we are with trying to be way out in front of people. So I'm excited about that journey.
And Jenny, you had a question too?
Thanks Claudia and thank you guys for the presentation. I just have a few questions. One is regarding the attendance policies. Do you have different procedures or support in between the three different tiers of MTSS? When it comes to attendance rules and, and consequences?
Yeah, sure.
So we worked together with the middle school actually as a work team over the summer to create some greater alignment. But yes, there are absolutely steps that happen along the way. So outside of the, kind of that, the slide that we showed you was more of like, what are we doing for our neediest students? But tier one, the things that everyone gets, right? Every single family, when a student misses a single class, whether it's excused or unexcused, gets an automatic notification. When students are, have missed a class three times, we are in agreement at both the middle school and the high school that a letter will be sent home. At the high school, our counseling staff will also be doing a follow-up check-in with that student to find out like, is everything okay? Does your family just need help figuring out how to communicate with us? Have you been sick and do you need support? Or is this a behavior issue that we need to work through overcoming? At six unexcused absences is when administration starts to show up and play a bigger role in that student's experience and connecting with the family, creating an attendance plan, setting some goals and expectations for the students and families to help ensure that they're not getting to that point of being chronically absent. And then at nine unexcused absences at the high school, there's credit attached to being in class. And so we have an appeal process that we've tweaked and shifted and tried to implement in the past without a great deal of success, but made some changes last spring that made it more doable. And really we see it as an intervention. When students know they need to be there to get credit, they change their behaviors, they seek out support. And we, and the, the point is not to take credit away from kids, but it's to help them see the importance and urgency in being there. And we saw a really great success with all of our students that had to participate in appeal process. So that's kind of our final step before you are fully on an intervention. Because at this point, this is a big problem for you. Yeah, I would say, I guess if you're beyond that, the final step realistically is courts, right? So we do still participate in the truancy process. Have had a lot of great success. Our, our county court system is not necessarily like those around us. They offer a lot of support and have been very helpful when, when we've had to bring students to the student review board.
So then those, those rules apply to all three tiers of MTSS? So it's the same applied throughout all the levels?
Yeah, I would just add, what I would add to that is that having deliberate steps on that pathway puts an adult interfacing with that student and family, which can lots of times unpack things that were undiscovered prior. And so then there's maybe it's a chemical thing, maybe it's a mental health thing. And there's lots of ways and then we can figure out how to get rid of those barriers and get them to that plan for success.
And then I have a question kind of regarding that connectedness that we're looking at for, again, helping the attendance. And I know that there are a lot of steps in place to increase and support connectedness between student and teacher. But what do we have at the high school that would improve the connectedness between student to student?
Well, I think, I think there's a, lots of layers of that question. I think foundationally, it's building classrooms that are safe and free of fear, right? Whether from a learning, from a learner perspective or from a safety perspective. I think our flex time is an opportunity for students to connect with people who they want to connect with. And I walk through the halls every day, I see students who will be in this classroom or that classroom or that counter space with their friends pretty much every day, building those relationships. CCR was redesigning that to have a bit more of what students are asking for. And if some of the feedback that we receive from them, I think that will be another place. That's a group of, you know, twenty to twenty-four students that meet twice a month around various topics around college and career readiness and some of that's relationship building. And I think, I think the thing we have as a conference of high schools is activities that really are connection points for, for students that are like life-changing. If they get connected to the right thing that they're passionate about and they get connected to some, to some positive students along the way, that's, that can be a game changer.
And then the focus area for the college and career readiness. So we have, I see that there are, there's a lot of encouragement and things set up for such as college fairs, college visits, college admissions, kind of training. I know you kind of have some rigorous support there. And we have our AP exams that were mentioned and AP courses that were mentioned. What do we have for encouragement and support and setup for career paths versus the college path?
Yeah, I think we're continuing to develop those pathways. The, you know, the state's helping with that as well. You know, the recent earned credit for, it's, it's without, it's basically credit without the work-based learning requirement. Where students can work in the summer, work during the year and get credit for like a health, their health careers. Our current technical education programs are continuing to evolve. And we just added ag here last year. That's really been impactful. And so I think we're interested in continuing to grow programming so that students see themselves in, in this place. There's a, I think, I think the challenge in a, in a budget tight world is being everything to everybody. And that's, so finding that balance on what students need and what they want is, you know, I think that's, that's where we got to try to be. And we're, I think, having hearing from the community and what they're, what they desire in their school is really important. And career and technical education to, you know, we know the industry is calling for people to be things. In addition to four-year college graduates, we need folks who are able to get in the trades and other three-year programming because that's what makes our economy work. So we have to pay attention to that as well.
And then I just have one quick question as a kind of a tag along to Ben's question regarding the cell phone use. I know that you, right now you're trying to work on implementing potentially a whole new cell phone use policy at the high school. But what we had currently, I thought you had mentioned no cell phone during instruction. Is that no cell phone use or no cell phone like as for the device?
Yeah, like putting devices in your, in your backpack is our, is going to be our goal. So not, so during instruction, that forty, fifty-two minutes, whatever it happens to be, it's like that's off, that's not a part of the experience, right? We have, if it's a, if it's red light, like that means no access to personal devices. That, that's, that's the draft at this point anyway.
And then what was the enforcement for that?
Yeah, the procedures would be that, like, like everything else, progressive, right? Where students, a teacher just reminder for the first time, then I think it leads to, hey, you, we're not touching devices. That's, that's a thousand dollar unit, we're going to let students manage that. But it might be there's a place we've designated here, that's where it needs to go for the remainder of the hour, right? Third time, probably, I think we're thinking the same procedure, but then a OER to us. So that we can contact the parents, say, what's the plan going to be? Because we can't, this is the third time in this class in three days, we have to have a different outcome. And then the fourth time, this kid just keeps progressing.
And I think the stoplight is going to be life-changing for a couple of reasons, just in my perspective. It's going to allow all three of us to have that conversation with the student without any gray area. There's a lot of gray area with cell phone use. We live in the world where it's allowed here, it's allowed there, it's not allowed here, it's not allowed there. And that's how they, that's how they learn at the school too. So it is also with teacher to teacher, it's also going to universalize and get everyone on the same page as well with that stoplight and just decrease a lot of that gray area. So we can have that conversation, which will be very effective. Helping that, does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, thank you for your presentation. I just would like to double down on, I like your theme of lead. And I think that kids, especially that, I mean, I think you set the standard of what this building's about and what your experience is about. And I like the idea when you hit graduation, you know, where are you going from here? But you want to make every year count and also have some fun. So I think getting around and finding out that one thing that that kid's really good at or maybe trying those different activities, encouraging them and keep them moving. Because I mean, a lot of kids nowadays are depressed, but I think if, keep them moving and keep them around situations and then kind of put in that, that little bit of nudge and that little bit of discipline, I think that's where we need to be. So appreciate your, your input. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay, you mean one question?
So I was wondering, now that we've had a school year of free lunch and breakfast, if you see any effects on student attendance, academic achievement, social growth, whatever, whatever you might want to comment. Can you, what's the differences that you see that might be caused by that?
Well, I don't know that I have anything conclusive. I don't know that from a, from a day-to-day, I haven't asked that question, first of all. So that'd be maybe the first thing is to get some, you know, do some qualitative research, like how did it go with students? What did you think about the free lunches and free breakfast? But, so I, I don't know, I just know that what I appreciate about our flex and lunch culture is that students have a lot of agency and they have a choice to bring their own lunch and they, or they get a choice to have it free. I mean, it's the best of both worlds, the way I see it.
I think, I think Becca and I work with a lot of parents that are very appreciative and have said that too. So I think reminding students that it is there. Students come to school hungry sometimes and have been in that routine of not having access to food, but it's there this year, last year and going forward.
There's definitely a breakfast line. There's definitely a breakfast line.
Okay, well, thank you so much to the three of you and we wish you much success in this upcoming year. I appreciated hearing, I know, I know we talk a lot about early intervention at the younger ages, but it's incredible to hear about the early interventions that you've worked on this summer and over the years. And yeah, just wish you much success. Okay, now we're on to item C, which is the discussion of commissioners review and comment on the proposed referendum. How many do you want to state us on that?
Yeah, so in the packet, I have provided both an overview of this next step of the review and comment and then the two relevant pages from the document that will be published in the official school newspaper. So the board approved the submission of the review and comment back in April. That document, as you know, it's a couple hundred pages long, is submitted to the commissioner of education. Commissioner of Education and their team review it. And they are looking for two pieces, they're looking around the educational and economic advisability of the projects. As you heard from Sal Bagley from ATS and R Architects, when we talk with them, it's, they know what the expectations are, they know what the standards are. So we expected to get a positive review and comment and we did. So the commissioner has provided our projects that are on the ballot in November with what's called a positive review and comment. And we're required to submit that, we're required to get that feedback from the, or that determination from the Minnesota Department of Education. We're required to talk about it at a public meeting and that is what we're doing tonight. The point of that is to let people know that we have received that document back from MDE. That also leads into the publication of it. We're now required to publish it at least forty-eight days, but no more than sixty days prior to the election date. There's no board action needed tonight, it's just simply the doc. There's no board action needed tonight. It's just simply the document and the plan that you have submitted has had a positive review and comment around the educational and economic viability of the project. So there's not much more to that. As you saw, the letter in the packet is fairly short, it's a couple pages long. One piece I would point out that I wanted to just double check on and ask when I looked at that is that you'll see that when you look at the ballot question totals, if you've attended any of our presentations, you know that those ballot question totals are slightly higher than what we have on the referendum itself. That is due to these, the project pieces that they're looking at. And in the document that you have, it assumes there's some assumption on interest. Once we sell the bonds and there's some interest rates on that, it's this differentiation between how much we would earn in interest on those bonds in the short term, minus any other fees that come in. So it's a very common thing for you to see that differentiation in the review and comment versus what the question is on the ballot. So if I were you and I was looking at that, that's a question that I would wanna make sure that we talk about. They're estimating what the par amount is and those kind of financial tools. So again, we're required to discuss this at a public meeting. We're also required to publish it in the newspaper at least 48 days and then no more than 60 in advance. So that is the review and comment. It's again fairly straightforward. And we'd be happy to discuss it at this time, should there be a need.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hellman. Any comments or questions for Dr. Hellman?
Just a comment and that is, I appreciate seeing the delineation of all the costs. I don't ever think I've seen it quite that way. So it's interesting to see the breakdown. Thank you.
Just a question on one of the contingency line, do we need to find that?
So in every construction project that schools have, there's a certain percentage. I don't recall what the exact percentage is, but of contingency. So for example, we do have a portion of the project at the high school that is renovation. Contingency, contingency is intended that if you run into something that was not anticipated, that you have that buffer to be able to address those kinds of things as part of the process.
Good question. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Okay, item D is our student citizenship handbook and Dr. Hellman will review updates to the 2425 handbook. Dr. Hellman facilitated a work team and a parent focus session to gather feedback and to align disciplinary practices across the board. Approval of the handbook will be an item for individual action at the next board meeting.
So in the packet, you have the student citizenship handbook. And the first thing that you will notice if you have looked at this document for any time, that the document is a lot longer now than it used to be. So the document used to be roughly 20 pages or so, and now it's nearly 60 pages. And it isn't that we have made substantial changes to the tables or consequences. That's not it at all. In fact, we had a work team with about a dozen folks from teachers, administrators. One of our school district attorneys participated in that. A district youth council student participated in that. And we spent six hours literally going line through line through the student citizenship handbook, looking at the potential infractions, looking at the different consequences that are associated with each occurrence of that, of those infractions. And we, we had very minimal changes in the actual consequences. That team really felt, yep, the consequences that the board had developed. If you think about it, the last time we really had a detailed student citizenship handbook was probably about 10 years ago. And so we look at those consequences today and the people who looked at it said, yes, we think that we're still in that right spot, again, with a focus on using discipline as a teaching tool. What's the least amount of consequence that we can provide that would, the reasonable person would feel prevents that behavior from happening again? We're dealing with kids and we want them to learn from their mistakes and to be able to move forward. The reason that the book became so much longer is that for a long time, in the name of efficiency, there were asterisks all throughout the student citizenship handbook. And that asterisk indicated that the principal had discretion. Now, in reality, principals used a, a small menu of items that they would select from to be able to address that behavior, but they could really customize it to each individual student. And in the last year, I've had a number of pieces of feedback from families in the community and staff who really believed when they saw that asterisk, that they meant that there was nothing, there was no consequence provided in that case. And I can assure you and our principals here who can assure you that that is not the case. But we prize ourselves with clarity to make sure that people are clear. And if my student has gotten in trouble to the point that we're using some of the disciplinary tools in the student citizenship handbook, I, I'm, I'm concerned. I'm looking at that document. And if I don't see exactly what may happen to my student or maybe another student who had done something to my own child, there can be that confusion about what actually did happen. So we talk with our principals, we identified what were the most often used kinds of introductory or basic level of the responses in those situations. And in every single one of those cases, you'll see that we've provided a menu, which of course has a piece at the end that says, another consequence that the principal determines is appropriate given the circumstances. But you're gonna see that those consequences are very consistent throughout the, throughout the student citizenship handbook. You will see that there are a few things that are added, very minimal things that are added from the first occurrence to the second occurrence to the third occurrence. But the idea is that if I am a parent or a student or a staff member looking at the student citizenship handbook, I can now say, okay, I understand what the infraction most likely was. And yes, here are the suite of, or the menu of options, if you will, that the principal may use in this circumstance. And again, we come from the point of wanting to establish a safe environment. We also want to use discipline for children. We have to always remember that we're talking about children here as a way to help them learn and grow, hold them accountable, while also making sure that they use that to fuel their own growth and development as they, as we prepare them for lifelong success, like our vision says. So that's really the biggest change, I would say, as you're seeing that, that suite or that menu of options just repeated through the book. Another part that I wanna call your attention to is around every time, in every circumstance, right underneath the list of consequences for students in grades kindergarten through third grade, we put a statement in that Minnesota statute prohibits schools from suspending students in grades kindergarten through third grade. And as people at this table know, that was a change by the 2023 legislature. We rarely use suspension with students in kindergarten, grades kindergarten through third grade. Once in a while, that's a tool that would have been used in the past. And we still have parents who will ask, well, why wasn't that student suspended? We of course can't talk about that with families. We're not able to talk about the disciplinary consequences for other children other than their own. But we just wanna make it clear that we don't have that as an option in grades kindergarten through third grade. Finally, I would say the largest change in the student citizenship handbook this year is really around this really, I, I find it deeply troubling concern that we're seeing across the country, but knocking on wood, has yet to make it here around the use of artificial intelligence for something that's called deep fake photographs. And these deep fake photographs are when a, a person will take a regular photograph of someone, use this tool and basically create a compromising photo of an individual. So it's using artificial intelligence basically to take a regular photo and, and do something that could be considered sexual or pornographic with it. We looked at that and said, we have to make sure that's explicitly stated somewhere in our handbook. And then we also looked at some other circumstances, thinking about what are some analogous kinds of things that could happen? For example, if there's a student who, in a non-consensual way, took a photo of another student, again, in a compromising position, again, something sexual in nature or pornographic in nature. We wanted to make sure the responses to those two circumstances were similar. And in this case, we moved, the old system would have put that under sexual harassment. We have moved that to sexual misconduct. And the reason is, this has happened in some other schools across the country. And we really wholeheartedly believe that the rights of the victim in this case far supersede the learning opportunity for the perpetrator. And so this is just something we will not tolerate. And so if students do enact in that behavior, of course, we will teach, learn, right? So that people can grow, but this is a very serious thing. And we wanna make sure that our student citizenship handbook responds in that way. And I, that's a little bit more graphic detail than we usually talk about topics, but we have to be, we have to talk about it straight. We have to tell people what it is so people understand and know, and so that we can be proactive in how we work through that. So that's really the biggest disciplinary change. And then the final thing I just want you to notice is that we are, it's been years since we've really printed a ton of copies of the student citizenship handbook. Most people access it online. And so what you'll notice is that we have created, I mean, this is not, this is not brand new technology, but we have created bookmarks or links so that people can click on the infraction and it will take them directly to the consequence table for that particular situation. So those are really the major changes to the student citizenship handbook. Be happy to talk through, again, we had a work team of people who worked with us. We also had offered parents an opportunity to be part of that work team or to come into a focus group and we had a few people take us up on that. So that's how we arrived at this today. No decision here tonight, but we are asking for approval of this at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Hellman. And can you just spend just a couple more moments on the work team that you facilitated? How big was it?
Yep, there were about a dozen people. We met twice for three hours each.
Thank you. It's a lot of input, a lot of feedback. Any questions or comments at this point? Okay, Ben?
Thanks, Dr. Hellman. Just a quick technical question. You were talking about the AI-generated piece. Page 42 of the handbook, if you look at six through eight, it says zero day suspension. I assume that should be different, yeah.
Yeah, I, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets corrected. Thank you for catching that, page 42.
Yeah, page 87 of the board, thank you.
This is why we do two readings. Yep, we will take care of that.
Okay.
I'm interested in the consequence of restorative activity. So when a, when a student has been disciplined, that's not something you can share with like the victim's parents, but a restorative activity seems to indicate that there's gonna be some interaction between the perpetrator and the victim. So it does become public. So could you just say something about how that works?
I'm gonna phone a friend on this one and ask Shane Byer to come on up to the microphone or Becca Bang. One of you come up to the microphone and talk about how you facilitate restorative practices.
Yeah, well, I think, we're in this together. Yeah, I mean, restorative practices, restorative strategies are, are not exclusively used as, it's either this or that. It's in, it's in conjunction with, right? Sometimes it is a conversation with the teacher and the student, restore the, repair the harm, move on, good, life's good. Sometimes it is the suspension or some time away or whatever it might be and a time to come back together and put a plan together for how are we gonna prevent this from happening again? Right? Build a relationship, restore that, reset, so that we don't end up back here again. So they, they work, it works in conjunction with, it's like, it's a, it's sort of, it permeates every aspect of our, of our approach with students.
Sometimes that relationship with the teacher, if it's teacher to student, is that much stronger and pays away from a successful end of the quarter, end of the semester, end of the school year, as well as students too.
I would just add too, you asked about kind of how does it work? So for sure, we would always start with if there's a victim in the situation, checking in with them first to see if that's something that they're comfortable participating in. And if they're not, then that's not, you know, like you're, we're never forcing a victim into a situation where they have to have a conversation with a perpetrator. But most often, as we probably all predict, most conflict is what leads to this. And conflict is two-sided, right? So most of the situations where there might be kind of a behavior response, that we're not necessarily communicating to the family, but oftentimes there's two sides to the story. And so we're facilitating a conversation as part of the plan. And some, and that doesn't mean that the student knows what other consequences might occur for either person. But they know that that's something that needs to happen to, to have a successful school year.
Thanks, those were good answers. Thanks.
I think we should share an update while we're here, by the way.
Well, I think you, you had a question about suspensions. And I think that's, I think that just to be truthful, that, that's on all of our minds all the time, right? We don't wanna put students out of their guaranteed right to a free and public education. But sometimes things happen. And so I look at our suspensions, we had 42 students. So about 3% of our student population ended up with a suspension. And I look at the reasons why it's without maybe one or two that willful, maybe insubordination. Otherwise, it's all illegal activity, health and safety kinds of things, fighting, chemical use, harassment, those sorts of things that we, we really can't allow or we, we have another problem. Right? It's that people like to feel like they can come to their space and be safe. And so that's, that's that balance piece. I don't know the better answer for suspension, but it is obviously a tool we don't use terribly often.
Then again, with that chemical, there's that support, the entry for chemical counseling. We have a partnership with HealthMinder.
And then you had a question too, Amy?
I have several questions.
Like a couple and then kind of talk around.
That. I was wondering if someone actually went through the citizenship handbook and just compared the contents of the handbook to the policies to make sure they match?
And the, well, this is a policy.
Yeah, I know. And that's why I wanted to make, I, I didn't personally do it. So I, cause I'm hoping you'll just say yes, and I can say, oh, good, that's.
Well, the student citizenship handbook is, is driven or is derived from board policy. So while we didn't do an explicit walkthrough this year with that, all of those consequences typically tie back, well, this is the policy. And the cases where we have something like, we have a harassment policy, this would tie back to the harassment policy.
And I just was hoping someone looked through and made sure that they're in agreement with each other.
And, and I believe they are. I mean, I, we, I, we, I can't tell you that we've gone line by line and checked, but I feel very confident that they are.
Okay, great. Then I, my second comment is just, I think we should include our vision somewhere. It's an important document. And with that, I'd love it if we included the sesquicentennial logo. It's been under the wire, but this is our sesquicentennial year and I would love to see that on the cover. So those are my comments for now. Please come back later.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else wanna make a comment or have a question about that? Otherwise, we'll go back to Amy.
I was gonna say, I did notice the policy links and I really like that. I think that's very helpful. On, one of my comments is on page eight at the top, it says, students are responsible to obtain a complete makeup work assignment for periods of absence. And my comment on that is, I think that's a little, since this citizenship handbook applies to all grades and it applies for, to all different types of students, to have something that puts the responsibility solely and completely on the students to make sure they get makeup work is maybe a little too extreme. I would love to see that say something more like the students in conjunction with their teachers are responsible to obtain a complete makeup work, you know, completely, just to, to not leave it so it's only the students who could do it. And I, I think that applies to actually from kindergarten through 12th grade because I, some 12th graders are still learning that skill and need some help from the teachers to make that happen. Then, let's see, when I was reading through it and no, I, I was a little confused by how things were listed and, and it's, and I think you've answered it, but it just would mean it's sort of inconsistently done. So as the number of infractions goes up, and you know, we get to like the two to three day suspension or three to five day suspension, it seems to me that those are in addition to the other possible consequences that were listed for the first. Because the principals and assistant principals still have discretion to choose how they're going to approach most things, right? So in some, in some boxes, we list all the same possibilities again and add one. And then in some boxes, we only add the new one. And I found that a little confusing because it made it sound like the suspensions were sort of the go-to. Well, you know, we could do all these other things, but we really want you to see the suspensions here. And, and maybe that's what we want for people to notice that suspensions are a possibility. But I just wanted to mention that.
And I, I think it's important to note there that, you know, to recall, we use a progressive discipline model. So when you go to the right in that third occurrence, the consequence for that is going to be more. the consequence for that is going to be more so than the second and more so from the first. So it does build in many of the cases. Depending on the infraction, there can be some substantial difference, or it could be very similar in all three occurrences. We are trying to make an effort, not all of the infractions have this, but we are trying to show those three occurrences for most infractions. There are some where there might only be one infraction, because it's really a bottom line behavior. There are others that there might be two, because again, by the time you get to the second one, it might be a bottom line, be, that's very infrequent, as you can see through the document. The place where you see the things repeated over and over, those are the places where the asterisks had been before. So what we're trying to do is bring clarity to the types of things that could be chosen in that circumstance versus the ambiguity, if you will, of the asterisk. So I'm a big believer in a saying called, "Today's problems are caused by yesterday's solutions." And that's, you've identified a problem that was created by the solution that we used to the asterisk. So we look at that general, for many of those times where you see those consequences, a very similar list, that's where the principal had greater discretion in the past. They give you talk to most of our principals, that's exactly the list of things that they might have chosen from. It may be one of those consequences, it might be more than one, right? Depending on the circumstance. But the idea is that as we move to the right, if we have tried to help you correct this behavior before, that there are greater consequences, including the possibility of suspension. And I think, really grateful that Shane talked about how few suspensions we have. And I think we read across the country about student behavior. And we know that overall, we have a very high standard here in Northfield for our student behavior. We know that our, many of our students meet it. And one of the great anecdotal pieces of data that I receive is from our substitute teachers. And when we talk to our substitute teachers, they want a substitute in Northfield for a number of reasons, but one of which is, they say the students are well behaved here. So we are a microcosm of society. We will always have students or, who are not following the rules. Some of that is just developmental, I'm pushing back. Some of it is a student makes a mistake that harms someone else or the community, and we have to hold those students accountable. And we do not want to suspend if we don't have to. But there are times where suspension is the appropriate option. Number one, it is to create some gap so that we can help people reflect or the family reflect on the circumstance. In some cases, it is about making sure that there's a separation between students to make sure that their health and safety is protected. Sometimes it's so that the school staff can create an effective plan to support students upon their return. And so we, we desire not to suspend students. But there are times where we have to, and it's clearly listed in the Student Citizenship Handbook. And how those ranges, those are historical. So boards previous would have gone through, and Rob was on the board, Jeff was on the board. The last time we really did a real detailed dive, we had several work sessions in the Student Citizenship Handbook and went through and looked at, were those ranges appropriate? And so they are historical. I can't say that this is a research-based piece, but it is what our community has established as the criteria when you commit certain infractions.
Uh, thank you for that explanation. And I guess maybe try to either make each column be sort of an extension. You know, you have these possible situ, these possible things that could happen to you. But then if you do it again, we can add, it could all be these, that we're gonna add on these, one or two other possibilities and, and make it additive in some way, or just consistent throughout the document. I don't mind that the suspension pops up. I think people should know it's serious. Yeah, and I'm getting to, to the end almost of my questions.
Um, let me get Jenny and Ben and then come right back to you.
Sure.
Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. Um, I just have one area of concern, and that is in the bullying section. And I know that we, we have to abide by the state's requirements when it comes to that. And so the definitions are, definition is in here. And it looks like it definitely is mirroring what, what the state's asking for. But my concern lies in each of the definitions on their own. So it states bullying can be, is to be defined as behavior that is intimidating, threatening, abusive, hurt, hurtful, and then also objectively offensive and involves an imbalance of power and substantially interferes with a student's education or ability to participate in school activities and occurs repeatedly. So it must meet all of those items in order to qualify for bullying.
That is correct.
Correct, okay. So to me, any one of those first four, or I'm sorry, first three items seems very serious to me in that it shouldn't just be let go just because it's not occurring repeatedly to our students. And so I would like to see all of those three areas in separate policy with separate consequences. Can you just talk a little bit about maybe why that's not the case? And what we can do about that?
So that's a great question, and I really appreciate you opening the door on this, because bullying is a term that is used routinely, and it's not used, you know, according to the definition. We've, we've really made a lot of behaviors into bullying behaviors, but by the state definition, it has to meet those requirements. Each one of those requirements, I would argue, are already part of the Student Citizenship Handbook. So let's just take abusive language by way of example. Abusive language is an, it's already an entry in the Student Citizenship Handbook. It's when you partner that other kind of incident. It, it might be a, it could, it could be an assault, right? It could be fighting, it could be, there's a ton of different things that it could be that would meet those categorize, those categories. Maybe not in exactly those same ways, but verbal abuse can be intimidating, right? It might be threatening. It also could be hurtful conduct. And so I feel really confident that all of those things are listed in the Student Citizenship Handbook in some other way. It's when they come together, and really, I think the key thing is that repeated behavior. So when someone does, again, I'm going back to this verbal abuse piece, just as the, by way of example, those things are addressed. They are addressed in accordance with the consequences are in that particular entry in the Student Citizenship Handbook. And the idea behind the bullying component is that when we see those things happening on an ongoing and regular basis. So we address what I would call bullying-like behavior when it is, it doesn't necessarily technically match that state definition. You are right, it is one of the most confusing things that we have as educators is this notion and the difference between what is bullying-like behavior and what is definition-based bullying. And as you said, our piece aligns exactly with the state law.
And I think that you're right, especially regarding the language, offensive language and intimidating behavior. So we have policies for that, but we don't have, we're kind of missing when it comes to that, it says, "Behavior interfering with a student's education or ability to participate in school activities." I see nothing addressing that behavior.
And so I, I would argue too, that, when I say argument or articulate, that, I'll take another example. So on page twenty-one, disrespectful behavior. So all individuals and groups, whether members of us, our school, community, or guests, deserve to be retreated with respect. Disrespectful includes abusive language or conduct intending to cause harm or resentment in others. Those are the kinds of things, when you put them together with those other items and it prevents a student's ability to be their best at school, that's where that bullying definition becomes. But when we know of circumstances that are leading up to that, we address those individual behaviors in that way. And since we have our high school principals here, I'd love if one of you would like to come up and talk about how this actually plays out in this bullying-like behavior, and especially if someone's actions are preventing someone, but it's a one-off, if you will. How do you take that and, and move that into the bullying? So Becca, go ahead and share.
Yeah, I guess I would just echo what Dr. Hillman is saying, that there's never a circumstance where perhaps two of the criteria of the bullying definition is met, and the third is not, and we're not reacting. It just ends up falling into a specific, a different criteria. So whether it's disruptive behavior or inappropriate language, there's always something that the other kinds of behaviors that you're seeing within that definition falls within. And one of the things that we've done, I think, and intentionally, is to minimize the number of different individual instances of definitions within our handbook. And that helps us have a better idea of what's happening in our school. So rather than having an, an individual line by line, every single version of what possibly could happen, it helps us to kind of cluster some of those things. So I can't think of a circumstance where something has happened and it hasn't, like when you're treating someone else badly, there's something in the handbook that addresses that. Are there any specific situations or any specific scenario kinds of things that you think might be missing?
Yes, so again, the interferences, so the disruptive behavior in classrooms. So it, you guys are kind of talking about like student to student or student to teacher behavior that could be offensive or hurtful. But what about disturbances?
Right, so I think on a dated, yeah, in a day-to-day situation, right? Like what, it kind of depends on how are they doing that? So is it that they are making the other person uncomfortable? And if so, how? So the how is usually where it shows up then in the handbook. If they're being ridiculous, right? Like they're in the classroom and they're making inappropriate sounds or something like that, the behavior falls into a different category then. If it is inappropriate language, it would fall into that category. When it has to do with, like, the person's identity, there's harassment pieces. So oftentimes, when it doesn't fit into bullying, it fits into harassment. If it's not an ongoing behavior, like, there aren't. The other thing that I think that we have to keep in mind is there's a gray line there in that everyone has like their, their own rights too. So like, I might show up as a student and I might make someone else uncomfortable. And it might be because I make, like, them coming in with my rights being met. So for example, students are allowed to wear clothing that, that represents who they are. Obviously, we, you know, there's guidelines around what that can be, but it might make someone else uncomfortable. And that doesn't take away their right to be in that classroom. So it really, I think it helps us to put a, put a box around, what are the things that you can't do that would make someone else uncomfortable being in that classroom? So again, I find any, any situation where that specific instance would show up, their behavior falls into a different category.
In other words, we, we just don't really have a policy or consequences for classroom disruptive behavior that would interfere with the, the student's education?
So disruptive behavior is one of our categories.
And which, which?
It's in the Student Citizenship Handbook.
Yep, in the handbook. Yep, thank you for asking. I hope, I hope that provides some clarification to the entire team.
Yep, disruptive behavior is one of them. Disrespectful behavior could be another. There's an offensive behavior component. So if there is a disruption in the classroom, typically, if you think about, I think it actually goes to what Shane said before. Not every disruption in the classroom means that you are referred to the office, right? So many classroom, what we, one of the things that we look at is teacher's effective classroom management. So what are the strategies that you use to address those things in the classroom before you have to make an office referral? One of the goals that you have as a teacher is to make sure that you've created an environment where you are able to address those things without having to go to discipline. And so we can hold people, two things can be true at the same time. We can hold people accountable and they can have disciplinary consequences. We can also hold people accountable, and there isn't necessarily a disciplinary consequence. So for example, if the disruptive behavior is something more of silly in nature, just gonna use that as an example. The teacher may talk to that student, right? After class and say, hey, you know, here's what you did, here's what our classroom expectation is. We just can't have that, right? This is not how we're going to be. That teacher may call the parent and talk to the parent about that. Now, if it gets beyond the point where the teacher has been able to effectively meter that behavior in the classroom, diminish that behavior in the classroom, that's when an office referral happens and administration gets involved. So ever, as a teacher, every year I started my classroom with, here are what our community expectations are for the year. Here's what I expect of you, here's what you can expect for me. And people who are really skilled at that are actually able to hold kids accountable in a much more powerful way than anything that we have listed as a consequence in this handbook. So I appreciate the, the question, because in the vast majority of cases, teachers are the ones who are holding the students accountable and they're diverting that behavior. Now, if it gets to the point where it is beyond what the community expectations are in that classroom, that's when the administrators get involved. And it, you, you can't, there, there's, you wish that there was a real, as, as Rico said before, we have, we live in some of the gray, right? Because not every single thing is exactly like the other. And so when I hire principals, I hire them for the lot of reasons. When I hire assistant principals, I hire for them a lot of reasons. But the thing that always comes back to the top for me is judgment. When exercising the judgment, when we have policy where it's not black and white and there's some gray pieces there, do we believe that almost all of the time, our administrators will take that route that will disrupt, in this case, and when we're talking about judgment and student discipline, will, what the reasonable person would say would prevent that behavior from happening again? And we can all think of people in our lives who held us accountable in a way that wasn't disciplinary, but yet really changed the course of how we behaved. So I really appreciate, because the Student Citizenship Handbook focuses on, what are the consequences when someone is referred to the office? But that's only the stuff that you see that's above. If you think about the glacier piece, that, that's the things that are above the water line that you can see. What you're not seeing are all of the work that teachers are doing in their classrooms below the line. And I could talk about this for an hour. I could talk about, about how positive greetings at the door, something that we're, we got a research piece with the University of Washington. When you greet a student by the name at the door, forty percent reduction in office referrals out of that classroom. Crazy, right? I mean, it's something as simple as greeting a student by name, because as we said, that connectedness is really an important part. So I will resist the urge to keep talking about it, but I really appreciate the question, because we're trying to create this culture where we don't get to the Student Citizenship Handbook when we really can handle those things in the classroom. But I can assure you that disruptive behavior is handled by the teacher, and if it's brought to the, it might not be bullying, right? But it may be a disruptive behavior that would be held to account and disciplined by the, the office. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but.
Good. Anyone else? And Amy, I know you had some more, right? And then Ben, you have a comment question? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Ben. And then come to Amy.
Sounds good. But as long as we have some of the principals here, I think it'd be good. I think Amy was articulating some concerns about the hierarchy that's in the, the table of the handbook. Maybe you can help us validate that in terms of first, second, and third occurrence. I was just curious if it's clear to you when you're kind of looking at that hierarchy if one of the steps are fairly obvious in the way the document's structured right now?
Yeah.
We're getting a workout tonight.
Yeah, no, thanks, getting my stuff sent. Um, I think it, like, one of the things that, that it really helps with is I feel like figuring out what, where the line is, I guess. So things that are just are completely unacceptable, and it helps to articulate that to our families. Um, I think that we have enough flexibility within, and anytime it is a, a more significant consequence, I'm thinking about, about suspensions primarily, we confer too. So it gives us a really good guideline of like, what's the most and what's the least that's appropriate so that we have alignment across the district? Um, and so that we can think through what's reasonable and, and communicate that effectively with our families. But I also feel like when there's nuance, because oftentimes situations will occur where more than one violation will happen in concert, it helps us kind of know what that looks like.
That's what I, absolutely, we use that the same way. I think we handle student situations case by case, and that's such a powerful tool to have as a menu of choices in the progression of that. But then again, we have that power to interact with that student situation in an ethical way and keeping the student's dignity, but also knowing where that line is as well. But I think the biggest thing is, is that we're not on an island together. We, we, we don't just have the handbook, we have all three of us. And we soundboard off each other every single day, multiple times a day. Does that make sense?
Yeah, then maybe my question's just a little more document-specific, but it's clear when you read it that the hierarchy of.
It is clear. Yep. And sometimes we use that as, and I hate to say leverage, but I think we refer parents back to that handbook to say, because they're, they're interested. They know about that hierarchy. They might not know about what actual consequences might be implemented, They might not know about what actual consequences might be implemented, but we refer back to that. Sometimes we see, we don't use it as a scare tactic, but sometimes we see we go below that and we restoratively work things out, which deposits that credit as well. Families.
Thanks for your patience.
Well, no problem. I always have lots of questions. But I'm at getting toward the end now. And they both, I want to just get a few comments on the harassment and the sexual misconduct policies. And I'm going to say all my comments now and then just let Dr. Hillman or whoever respond. So part of what I'm interested in is what's the line between sexual harassment and sexual misconduct? And how do, how do you know when that line's been crossed? And then the other comment I have is both of them include the idea of distributing photos. And for harassment, the problem is only distributing photos. For sexual misconduct, it's distributing or sharing photos. And I'm wondering how you define distributing? Sharing, I think, can have a term, a lot of people think of sharing like social media sharing. And so how is sharing defined? And what happens if I'm just showing you this deep fake? But I'm not actually giving you a copy or access to it. Is that sharing? Is that showing? Is that something else entirely? And do we need definitions for these somewhere?
So you're you're asking all sorts of easy questions tonight, Amy.
Yes.
So I would go to the definitions in between those two areas. So I want to specifically look at sexual misconduct. So it is talking about, if you look at that introductory course, sexual misconduct is really more of an, I would call it more of a direct and active act, if you will. So you see the definition on page forty-one, engaging in non-consensual sexual intercourse or sexual contact or indecent exposure with another person, including intentional touching. So this is more about I'm taking that almost physical action. We added, in this case, these, the the deep nudes and then the other photographs because we felt that that is in in this day and age is akin to those other things and needs to have the response that the consequences for those other items do. And harassment, I think you take it a little bit of a step. It's more words, right? It's more words and behavior than action. And I'm going to look at my assistant principals if they believe or and I'm getting some nods that that's the appropriate distinction. So if if you are saying, Amy, that you think in the harassment section that we might need to tidy up the language around the photo component, I think that that's fair, right? Because we moved, we moved part of it, we moved it to sexual misconduct, and it could be that we just didn't polish that language in harassment enough. What we want to be really clear about is if people do that, right? If people are either using artificial intelligence to create these images or they are taking the images in a non-consensual way. And when we say sharing, I think that we actually want to use the broadest definition of the term. So sharing could be social media. It could be passing a phone around. It could be directing people, right, to some other venue in which they could see that. I think in that circumstance, again, giving our administrators the the authority and the breadth to be able to address it using sharing in the definition. Sharing can mean a lot of different things. If we get as specific a saying via social media or text message, very quickly, the language could be outdated, right? It's what comes next after that. And so I would argue that the word sharing has a definition. And I'm basically giving this or making someone else aware of it. I think using the broadest definition is important.
Okay, so my, I I don't disagree with you. My concern was just that sharing seems like I'm giving it to you in some way, whatever way that is. While showing could be, you know, added that would just, you're not actually coming into possession of whatever it is, you're just getting a look at it.
And and this is where we're we're really, you know, looking at detailed level of of nuance in that case. And that is where I would lean on the judgment of the administrator in that case to to make that determination. We can certainly look further if you would like us to look at what a definition of something like sharing is in that case. We can certainly come up with a list of items. I'm always going to want in this particular venue where things are evolving so rapidly, I want to be able to create a circumstance where we are able to respond effectively in those circumstances while not necessarily hyper limiting us in what the definition could mean. Because we wouldn't have even been able to have this conversation a year ago, right? A year ago, this was, this conversation couldn't have happened. That's how quickly these things are changing. And so we want to make sure that in these circumstances where our children, because kids are in this very vulnerable circumstance, we want to make sure that they are protected and that the consequence is very clear and that we have the ability to respond as needed.
So my request is that you consider adding the word showing. Because I think that just adds another layer.
Ben?
Kind of want to play off Amy's question a little bit too between the harassment and misconduct because it seems like we're making a differentiation between how the content is created and not the content itself. So if I read around harassment, I think there's something in here that refers to, you know, photos and distributing of photos. But is there a substantive difference in terms of the policy approach between the two? I guess that's my my question.
Tell me more in terms of, are you talking about the response? Are you talking about the?
Right, when you sort of look at the gradation for first, second, and third occurrence from harassment versus misconduct, it's a different disciplinary schedule, right? So we have AI-generated images essentially being held to a more strict standard in terms of distribution and sharing than we would other inappropriate images. I'm wondering where that, if that's inappropriate, if that's the intent, where is the intent coming from?
So we'll, we're going to take a look at that particular language again because our intent, if it wasn't clear, we want to make sure that that part is super clear, that we are not differentiating between the, we're using the artificial intelligence piece to call that out, right? Because that is something that I think a lot of people are concerned about in terms of this particular case. This is not, we're not talking about all artificial intelligence, right? We're talking about artificial intelligence in this particular vein. And so whether I snapped the photo myself, right? Or I generated it, those two are intended to be treated in the same way. I would also highlight there's a difference that in the harassment and violence section, sexual harassment is one component of that, which would also fall under Title IX, which would be investigated in a Title IX way. And so, but in that harassment and violence area, there's sexual harassment is one part of that, right? So I think that that's part of the difference in the gradation where sexual misconduct, you've gone to this next level, which if you actually read that definition, quite a bit of it is actually also illegal behavior, right? So that's also another differentiation there. But we want to make sure that that's really clear. So if that's not clear to people at this table, that's why we do two readings. And we can take a look at that to make sure that there's explicitly difference between that general concept of harassment and when you cross the line to misconduct. I appreciate the questions because I do think this is important. If you think about the schools that, if you think about the schools that have dealt with this, if you read, there's several articles across the country about this. It's a, it's a real problem for those places who have dealt with it, primarily for the students who are involved. And so we're trying to learn from what other districts and other communities have encountered and how are we able to be proactive and address this in this circumstance?
Yeah, and I would just offer, I think we've been successful in policy and being on policy committee focusing on the what and less on the how, right? So we have under harassment now, I believe it's, let me find the language, but distributing sexually inappropriate photos. So and I know in other policy areas like around academic integrity and honesty, we intentionally sort of stayed away from specifically mentioning AI. So I wonder, I mean, I think I I know we're trying to address sort of an emerging issue, but I think we may be stronger focusing on the what and maybe less on the how in this instance.
And just, we did include artificial intelligence in our scholastic dishonesty piece last year. So that's another area that we included it. But we'll come back and we'll get with our team and polish this language a little bit for you for the next meeting.
Amy, did you get all your comments and questions in?
I'm good, thanks.
Anyone else have a comment or question?
I just really appreciate this robust discussion. Thank you.
Okay, item E is our Fall 2024 Bond Referendum. Superintendent Hillman will update the board on the Bond Referendum informational campaign and highlight some upcoming events.
Yes, so just it's been a month since we met the last time. And so since our last meeting, we have had several presentations and several tours. So we go back all the way to July ninth, the day after the last board meeting. We did a presentation for the Castle Rock Township Board. We also did a presentation for the Bridgewater Township Board. We've continued with some informational leaflets at some community education events like the Books and Stars and the evenings in the park. In that case, when a person completes, they receive a survey. Those are grant funded items. When they have the survey, they also get a copy of the information. So it's being handed to people at those events. We also continued to have a table at the Third Thursday events. So we had that Val Murdistorf has been one of the people who has done that tabling. She'll also be doing it this Thursday night. We had a really great engagement during Northfield Crazy Days. We've been at that event for years, doing our thank a teacher approach. And then this year, just a lot of great interaction with questions and people seeking information about the bond. We've had a couple of tours this past weekend. We had our last tour on Saturday, a dozen people were there. We've ranged between two and probably twelve or fourteen people at most of the tours this summer. And then coming up in the next couple of weeks, we have the District's Chamber State of the District address this Wednesday, which will be, will include part of the bond and bond discussion and bond presentation. I know several board members are registered to go to that. If you would like to attend, you can still sign up. It's this Wednesday, I think it's at eleven thirty, and you can register directly through the chamber. They'll bill the district if you want to come to that. Fifty North will do us our second of three presentations at Fifty North. That's on Wednesday night, again, Third Thursday, Val and and the team will be there this Thursday for that. And our next tour will be a week from tomorrow, four to six PM at the high school. So really a lot of work around tours, a lot of work around making sure that we're presenting at these different events. And I really just want to thank the board members who encouraged us to present at township board meetings. Those have been some really positive, we had a special, we actually had a special meeting at Greenville Township. It wasn't their township board meeting. We probably had a dozen people at that, two hours. It was great, Val attended that with me. Great engagement, great questions, people very curious and whether they agree or disagree with the proposal. People are curious and they want to know and they are engaging in this very positive way. So I'm very proud of the tenor overall that we've had so far and will be continuing on. You've seen our signage is up, those things are happening. So we're going to continue to make sure, our goal is to make sure that people are informed and a democracy, people get to make the choice, right? And they get to tell us on November fifth what our answer is to the next steps with Northfield High School. Our goal is that people have the actual information. And the more people who have that hands on coming to the tour, we have found this really important, but we'll continue to work really hard so that people get to see what we're talking about, that they have a chance to hear about what we are proposing, what the impact would be should it pass, what the impact would be should it not pass? And then what the impact obviously for students and taxpayers will be. And so we just want people to be informed and we'll keep engaging the community all the way through November fifth. So that is where we are at right now. I do want to make one other comment. We've done sixty-one events so far, both internal and external, since you approved this in March. And we expect to see, I would expect close to maybe eighty, ninety, or even a hundred events by the time we're done. We're entering the time right now that would be the traditional bond referendum informational campaign. This is different. We know that early voting this year is going to be substantially more than what it has been in the past. And so early voting begins on September twentieth. We want to make sure for people who go to that early voting booth that they have all the information that they need. But as we enter this part of where you typically see the more traditional bond referendum campaign, I've invited board members to attend any of the events and many of you have attended events from time to time. I want you to know I'm going to be more intentional about asking you to attend events in the next coming months, just to make sure that board members are also able to hear and see and talk with residents about what their thoughts on the project are and just be able to give your perspective as well. So just know that I'll be asking, not for every event, but more intentionally for some of the events coming up that board members accompany me. So we look forward to that. The reaction has been, it's been a great dialogue is what I would say.
And I've been on a few of those tours and I'm always amazed by the mix of people who show up from educators in and out of the district to alumni, people of all ages. It's just, it's terrific to see them get engaged and just get information from you. So thanks for doing that. I know this past Saturday too, there were a lot of questions.
Yeah, that was very good.
Board members, any questions or comments at this point? Okay, good. Okay, item seven is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration?
I don't really want to pull anything, but I have a sort of a question comment on one of the items in the consent agenda. And that's Policy five oh three. And at at one point on page two, under section B one, it says the application can be made to the school board. And I saw that and I just thought, I'd, I'm not sure I would want to be having people. This is for absences, school absences, extended absences. So my request is for the policy committee to consider that policy in more detail.
So all we did in this policy, Amy, the only thing that has been changed in this policy are the recommended changes by MSBA to align with the new law. So what I'd recommend is that we move forward with this and then we can bring this one up in our, we can accelerate the review of it in our policy committee. But one of the reasons that when the board approved having statutory policy changes approved as part of the consent agenda, it was to ensure that our policy aligns with current law. So that part that you're talking about is something that is from prior, you know, this is not part of the statutory updates.
It is part of the statutory updates, but.
Where are you looking at?
Page two, B one, excused absences. Let's see.
Yes, so in that case, then what I would, we're going to go back and take a little, but that's right from the statute then.
Because it says, application may be made to any member of the board. I'm like, I don't want these applications. I don't know why I would be in the middle of them. So that's is my request. If you could have the policy committee take a look at that.
And then we can also, you know, go back and talk to MSBA about why they put it in that way, if that makes any sense.
That would be great. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm just curious on seven G item superintendent issue. Are we going to bring that up and talk about it and have ability to vote on that in a roll call?
A superintendent issue?
Contract, is that in there?
The contract. The contract is part of the consent agenda. Did you want to pull it?
Yeah, I mean, you pull it as a separate item, yeah.
Would like to pull the contract?
Yeah.
Okay, any other items that board members would like to pull? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping without the contract as part of that grouping? Okay, moved by Amy, thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Jeff? Were you seconding it?
What's the motion again?
Amy moved that we accept the consent grouping without the superintendent contract as part of that grouping. Do you second that?
Okay, gotcha, second. It's a long day. Oh, yeah, second then. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Yeah.
Two nays? Motion passes. Motion passes. Okay, so what we will do with that contract, give me just one moment. So now we will look at that contract and vote on that. So we pulled it out of the consent grouping and now becomes the next item for us to discuss and vote.
Does that make it eight D or eight A, you're saying you said next? Just want to clarify, you mean it goes to the end of the list? Is that correct?
It, it becomes the next item. So we're at item seven, consent agenda, and so now this becomes item eight.
Okay, thank you.
And then we will move into items for individual action. Good. Okay, um, we have the superintendent contract as a separate item for consideration. I will take a motion to approve the contract, the superintendent contract. Then we will have discussion on that. So I move that we vote on the superintendent contract. That wording sound appropriate, Anita? I move that we approve the superintendent contract. Okay, is there a second? Okay, Amy, seconds? And now we will open to discussion. Jeff?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I'm not even, we, we're a public board and one of the things that doesn't make necessarily sense to me is, I would basically, and I probably, if I wanted to put this as, as a motion, but my thought would be, when you have four people coming off the board and this is four, five, four or five months before the next board. I mean, I would, I would want a necessarily superintendent, regardless of who the superintendent is, table the issue until the new board. Because that, I mean, you're, you're voting on something that if you have a two or three year. On, on state statute, I think it says, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Superintendent's contract can be up to three years, so it could be less, correct? So I guess, I mean, if there's any discussion on that, I just think that if you have anybody that's, you know, it, it could be, and it'd probably be a lot of the same people if they get reelected, that I think if you're going to ask for a three-year contract, you know, I would, I would table that until January, February of next year and let the new board vote on that, so.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Any other comments or questions on that contract?
Sure, no, I think that, I think maybe it's a point of information. So when does the current contract expire that we're operating under?
Val, do you want to help out with that?
The current contract expires June 30th of '25. And this contract would be July 1 of '25 to June 30th of '28.
Yeah, I was going to add, I mean, I'm certainly comfortable with Dr. Hillman's performance for the district. And I think, you know, I would certainly support the contract as written. I think Matt's done an exemplary job and continues to do so. So I think certainly in favor of his leadership in supporting that contract and doing that with the board that we have in place right now. That we're an elected body, this is standard business that falls within that timeframe. So thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and it, it's not doing anything out of the ordinary. This is what we normally to have.
Right.
At this time of the year and it's normally part of the consent agenda. So just voicing that, your opinion, that it's nothing out of the ordinary.
I, I would.
So I'm going to see if there was a comment over here first and then call you. Jenny or Ben, Jenny had a comment?
I, I just want to add to what Ben says. I think that Dr. Hillman has been exemplary and I do not want to give him any reason to think that we think otherwise and to start looking somewhere else. So I would like to support this contract as well.
Yeah, and there, there is this, we, we had an excellent review evaluation. So there's really no, you know, real reason to hold up a contract and just create that feeling of something not settled. So I would also like to see us vote on that contract. I'm going to call on Jeff and then Cory.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my point is regardless of who the superintendent is, I just think that, I mean, I would make a motion to, to table the issue until January, February next year and a vote on that, but I don't think that's going to pass anyway. But the reason I will be voting no on this is because I think it should be decided. If he's asking for a three-year contract, that's going to, you know, I think that the new board should vote on that. So anyway, that's my, that's my position. So thanks.
Cory?
I have a few thoughts. He's not asking for a contract, we're offering a contract. And as Amy said, last month, we gave Dr. Hillman a 4.92 out of five grading level. So in a very competitive and continually challenging field of education where more and more people are leaving, to even have a whiff of this is embarrassing. We are very fortunate to have Dr. Hillman there. And this is quite upsetting to have someone who just said he's spent 50 meetings in the last three months trying to do the bidding of the, of the board is completely inappropriate as far as I'm concerned. As others have said, this is not something out of order. As someone who's been on the board for 14 years, you would have approved at least four of these contracts in the same manner. This is a separate issue than the specific contract. Certainly if you want to come back and discuss contract.
Let me respond to that when it's done.
This is my time. If you want to discuss contract stuff about how we structure that, that's a great conversation to have at a later date. To do it tonight is completely inappropriate.
Response? Yeah, I'm just, I'm more for, it isn't about the contract. It's tabling the idea of voting on the contract to the new board. So I, I mean, I'm not going to motion on something like that, but that's going to be my reason for voting no for the contract. And, you know, Cory, you're certainly entitled to your opinion, but that's my opinion also.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jeff was asking for a roll call vote and so we'll have Anita facilitate that. Yes, I moved that we accept the superintendent contract. But we approve the superintendent contract and Amy seconded that.
Butler?
Thousand times yes.
Irwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Miller? Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
No.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we are on to our items for individual action and we have three items, one of which is a resolution. Board members, make sure that your mic is on and that you speak into it so Anita can record your vote. We have first up a resolution relating to the election of the school board members and calling for the school board election. The Board of Education has requested to adopt the attached resolution regarding the school board election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. This resolution is the board authorization necessary to formally establish this year's election process. The adoption of this resolution will meet the requirements necessary to comply with the election process. Ballots for school board election will be included in the general election ballot, ballots prepared by the county auditors. The official canvas of the election results will be scheduled as an agenda item for the board, for the regular board meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. I'll take a motion and then if there's any discussion, we can have that. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as described? Okay, move by Ben, is there a second? Jenny? Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will ask Anita to facilitate that roll call vote.
Butler?
Aye.
Irwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item B is our policy 441, the use of technology and telecommunications systems by employees. The board is requested to approve the update to policy 441 regarding personal software installation. We'll take a motion and then we can discuss. This is the first time we're hearing of this policy and we are, let me take that motion and we can open up for comments. Is there a motion to approve the update to policy 441 as presented? Okay, Ben, and second?
Second.
Dr. Hillman, do you want to make some comments?
Yes, I just want to clarify, rarely do we bring a policy to you and ask you to approve that change in one evening. The reason that we're doing that is that we typically have been able over the years to allow staff to install their own software. And several months ago, as we've continued to update our cybersecurity systems, we have had to pull that authorization back. We are just seeing software that isn't updated well by companies, those kinds of things. And so we have pulled back on the ability for staff to be able to install their own personal software. One thing, as we pulled that back, we start to see what are the logical things that would make sense to still empower staff to be able to have some kind of personal software on their computer. And the piece that has come up is some universities have a specific web browser that graduate students need to use for testing and things like that. And so in order to support our teaching staff as they go through their master's degree programs, many times they're focused on student instruction in those programs and we want them to be able to use their school device in those programs. So we're carving out that one exception that employees who are in a graduate level course that would be used for a teacher lane change is outlined in the agreement with the Northfield Education Association. That one part that our technology staff, they're not allowed to install it themselves, but our technology staff would be able to help them install it. So we're just clarifying that personal software, which we used to be able to allow a little bit more of, is not allowed for installation. But if there is university issued software, we would allow the tech staff to install that. It's intended to be able to help make sure that our tech staff have a very clear line between what is permissible to be installed and what is not. So it's an unusual circumstance and the reason that I'm bringing it for a one reading is that we do have a number of staff who are beginning graduate classes in the next couple of weeks. And we want to make sure our tech staff have that clarity of what is permitted and what isn't. Working with university partners, we feel comfortable about those software packages, but we want to be able to limit, and I, I can see in the future, we can start some other exceptions possibly. But just in the state of K-12 education, having been hit by some of these cybersecurity issues, we're trying to do what we can to make sure that our system is in alignment with those best practices.
Thank you. Any comments or questions at this point? Hey, Amy?
So what happens to personal software that's already installed on people's computers?
We aren't removing that at this time. I think it's very limited, the kinds of personal software that are still installed on people's computers. What would happen is our tech staff will assist in removing that over the next few months.
So all personal software will be gone?
Likely. Not that they will be able to find every single one of those, but it's about trying to make sure we're about moving forward with that.
And has any discussion with the staff happened to see how they're actually using their computers and what software they have installed themselves?
This is why we have the exception tonight, right? Because when we pulled that back, this was the part that we discussed with staff, what that reasonable exception was for those graduate level courses. So yes, we have had feedback from staff. We've also had to tell some staff that there are certain things that they may have installed in the past that might have been for, you know, their own personal use that we just can't allow to be, continue to be installed.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Finally, we have a ratification of employment action. I will take a motion on that. And Rob, did you want to make a comment or should I just?
This is something that I'll be abstaining from just because I haven't received any of the information, so I can't make an informed vote on this.
Okay, is there a motion to ratify the employment action? Move by Ben, second? Cory? Do we want to have any at this point? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next is our items for information. We have filing for the school board is July 30th through August 13th in the district office. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5 o'clock on August 13th, 2024. We have our staff breakfast and program. We will welcome back staff for the 24-25 school year on Monday, August 26th, 7:00 AM, 10:10. At the Northfield Middle School, the board is invited to join us. And then we have our e-learning plan, the 24-25 e-learning plan. Superintendent Hillman will share about the e-learning plan. The use of the e-learning plan was approved by the board in unison with the 24-25 school year calendar in December, 2023. We are required to share the plan each year with the board and post it to the district website.
So just a couple of comments. The e-learning plan is similar to what we've used in past years. The good news is we can use the same activities this year because we had no e-learning days last year, which if we could roll to another year of no e-learning days, I'd be thrilled with that as well. So it is that e-learning days, we continue to look as a bridge through certain winter weather activities. And again, it only begins with the second full day closure. One thing I do want to point out, just while we're communicating the plan here, is that this year on November, I believe it's the 27th, the day before Thanksgiving, something that we have wanted to do for a while is be able to have an e-learning rehearsal day. So on that day, the day before Thanksgiving, part of that calendar is that we will have an online day of school. That day, we know there's lots of people who are traveling and we want to be able to practice the use of that when, before we actually need it. So that, I think it's November 20th, it's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we'll be doing an e-learning rehearsal day so that people can participate from anywhere. It's part of the new legislation that allows us to deliver online instruction to our own students. The plan is the same as it's been for several years. The activities will be the same as had been planned for last year. And then we just have this one additional piece of that e-learning rehearsal day, which is something I hope to see us have each year, just so that we're able to practice that. So when people are up at 6:30 in the morning or 7:30 in the morning thinking about, how am I going to do this day, that they've had a little bit of non-pressure to be able to execute it.
And will families be able to opt out of that one as well?
Yes, they can, just, just like anything else, that part of the e-learning plan is if your child can't participate that day, you simply call in and it is an excused absence. Just like if we had a weather event and we had school and you didn't feel that it was safe enough for your child to attend, you can call and say, I'm not going to send my student today and it'll be an excused absence.
Comments or questions from the board members?
And let's all hope none again this year. Wouldn't that be great?
All right, our next item is future meetings and those are all Mondays, the regular board meetings here in the district boardroom, August 26th, 6:00 PM, September 9th, September 23rd. That is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Jeff, second? And by Cory? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned.